Good evening and welcome to the December meeting of Lithgow City Council, the 1st of December. I'll start with an acknowledgement of country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges the Wadri elders, past and present of the Wadri nation, the original custodians of the land on which the Lithgow communities reside. The council also extends our respects to our neighbouring nations. Declaration of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and that those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any person, councillor or employee, and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause 14.1 of the Code of Meeting Practice. I note that all councillors are present. Declaration of interest, I actually have one. I have a significant non-procurnary 6.5, which is a notice of motion from councillor Fredericks. I'll be leaving the chamber. Is there any others that have any declaration of interest?
Yes, Mayor, I have a procurnary interest in item 2.2. As I prepared the archaeological assessment for the project, I may be doing thorough work in 2026, I'll be vacating the room.
Thank you, councilroom. Any further declaration of interest?
If I could ask, Mayor, you're leaving the chamber because of the going to the Regional Planning Committee. Are you the only person on that committee?
No, I might have two delegates, councillor Ring.
Okay, so should the other delegate remove themselves as well? I can't remember who that is.
That's up to them.
I haven't acknowledged that I'm going to be on that committee until after Christmas.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I wasn't aware. Honestly, I couldn't remember who was on the committee.
I'm very happy to be on the committee, but at the moment my health has not been well enough to do what is right for that committee.
Oh, that's fine.
So councillor Statham, are you resigning from the committee at this stage?
That is not on the agenda. And that question shouldn't be asked in public.
I was just making you-
No, you don't have to.
You raised it councillor Statham, you said that you're not going to attend until after Christmas?
I said I'm not going to attend until after Christmas due to my health will not allow me to-
That's fine, so I just-
It does not mean that I'm going to resign.
And that's what I was clarifying. Now, we have a confirmation of minutes. Can I have someone move the minutes that were taken of the ordinary meeting of council held on the 27th of October? I'll move them. Thank you councillor Fredericks, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Ring, is there any opposition to those minutes? If there's no opposition, I consider them carried. Public forum.
Before public forum, could I move a procedural motion? Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Given we have nine speakers, could we restrict their speeches to three minutes with no extensions?
Are you moving that way?
Yes.
I'll second that. So councillor Fredericks is seconding that. Do we have any opposition to that procedural motion? No, then it's considered carried. Thank you. The first on my list, and now we head to public forum, the first on my list, sorry, is Monique Wilson, if you'd like to come forward.
A question, Mayor. Could you just inform the speakers that exactly what we just did? Because I'm not sure that they may be aware of what we just did.
Thank you councillor Tysef. You've got three minutes. That's it. No extensions will be given, unfortunately. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, general manager and directors and councillors. My name is Monique Wilson, I'm the applicant, and I'm here today in support of the administration's recommendation to approve the childcare centre at 20 Curtin Place Lithgow. Throughout this entire process, we have worked closely with experienced consultants and councils' planning team to ensure that the proposal meets all relevant planning controls and complies across every technical and regulatory area. Importantly, this type of development is permissible with consent on this site, and our application has been assessed accordingly. We remain fully committed to meeting every condition of consent applied to this development. I would also like to acknowledge and thank both council and the neighbouring residents for the opportunity to meet on site recently. That meeting allowed for us to clarify misunderstandings, answer questions directly, and demonstrate our knowledge, our intentions and our commitment to a transparent process. We look forward to demonstrating through our actions, our daily operations and our involvement in the local community, that our service supports the Lithgow's vision statement and will bring genuine value and high quality education and care to the families of Lithgow. Our organisation is a reputable and well-respected early childhood education provider with a proven record of high quality practice and compliance, strong child safety standards, inclusive and community embedded programmes, and an ongoing investment in staff training and professional development. And we will be bringing our knowledge, our expertise and the highest standards of early education to this local community. We are determined to work collaboratively with the community and with council to ensure that the centre becomes a trusted and highly valuable resource for the children and families of Lithgow. Thank you for your time and the consideration of the recommendation before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Wilson. The next person on my list is Grant Colville. Is he here? No, we might come back to him. Anne Colvin?
Madam Mayor and councillors, another three speakers and I are presenting tonight on behalf of a group of residents who are objecting to the proposed childcare centre. Each speaker will cover different issues of concern across the development application. We wish to begin by saying that we support childcare and the important service it provides to families and communities, but in the right location. Our comments are focused on the most recently exhibited plans and reports for the DA. However, we do note from the business paper that there are three additional pieces of information relating to outdoor play, evacuation and signage which have not been exhibited, nor have we been notified or given the opportunity to view or make comments. We object for many reasons and have highlighted the existence of many non-compliances in our submissions, of which I hope that you have all received. I wish to speak about a couple of concerns. The bulk, scale and visual impact of this commercial proposal is unsympathetic with the streetscape of Curtin Place, which is characterised by extensive manicured lawns and gardens with the distinct absence of concrete car park fences, garbage bins, signage and water tanks forward of the building line. No treatment of this commercial proposal such as coloured concrete or stenciling or movable potted plants can make it fit into the existing residential neighbourhood of Curtin Place. Curtin Place is known to be affected by flooding in this area and may result in restricted access to the proposed childcare centre, which is not in the interests of the parents and children. So in summary, we do not believe that the approval of this application is within the public interest. We ask two things from our councillors tonight. Firstly, that you see this development for what it is, the wrong development in the wrong place, and secondly, refuse the development application. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mrs Colvin. I've got Michael Cole.
Madam Mayor and councillors, I am speaking on the proposed childcare centre. Firstly, in relation to noise, it is important to remember that this is a very quiet residential area. Noise generated by the proposal includes traffic, pick-up and drop-offs, outdoor play and heating and cooling equipment. The traffic generated by this development will result in a minimum of an additional 82 car movements per day for a minimum 50 weeks of the year, which will result in a considerable increase in traffic noise, which will be noticeable by residents in Curtin Place and Enville Avenue. Even with the proposed acoustic fencing located on the boundaries as shown on the exhibited plans before you, it will result in an increase in the noise level that is very clear and represents a distinct change in volume. This means that residents will be adversely impacted when compared to the current background noise levels. Furthermore, these changes in noise levels will be worsened by the necessity to install heating and cooling units, which have not been considered in the DA. Furthermore, the two-metre acoustic fence with angled section located on the southern boundary will depose of stormwater onto the neighbouring property, creating a nuisance. Secondly, the exhibited emergency evacuation plan shows the travel path adjoining the building, which may be the subject of the emergency, entering areas that are not part of the DA and are being obstructed by gates, staff car park and the driveway. It delivers the children and staff onto Curtin Place, which has been the site of many near misses and accidents. This represents a safety risk within an emergency situation. Thirdly, the location of the commercial waste bins in front of the proposed childcare centre and near the resident of 18 Curtin Place is a potential over nuisance, particularly in the warm months. This issue is further compounded when you are adding the commercial disposal of nappies. In conclusion, the approval of this application with so many impacts, deficiencies and non-compliances would not be in the public interest. We, the residents of Curtin Place, please ask our councillors to refuse this DA. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr Cole. Nancy Cole?
Madam Mayor and councillors, I wish to speak on the proposed childcare centre and outline some of our concerns. The proposal is overlooked by two residential properties and a public place being Muscat Parade. These overlook into the outdoor play area, with the public space also having a direct view into the proposed bathroom. These present an unacceptable safety and privacy risk for the children. In relation to the need for childcare in Lithgow, the residents have undertaken research that has demonstrated existent capacity within the childcare sector of Lithgow. This includes one facility recently stating a 60% vacancy rate. In fact, with a residential vacancy rate of 1.7%, it is not in the public interest to lose quality residential housing stock. The proposed site of the childcare centre is highly constrained by its shape, lack of street frontage, the location of the dwelling on the side, the changing levels between Curtin Place, Muscat Parade and Vainett Street, the surrounding a quiet residential neighbourhood, the presence of a two-storey dwelling, the narrow road and lack of footpaths. These are all factors which cannot be altered and make it a site that is not a good fit for the proposed childcare centre. So in order to ascertain an expert opinion on a number of areas of the proposal, the residents have engaged experts in the fields of building, planning, environmental law, environmental health, noise and traffic, engineering and safety. This has resulted in the identification of numerous shortcomings and non-compliances identified from the exhibited plans and reports. It is doubtful that they can be resolved at the construction certificate stage. Evidence of compliance is a must for the DA stage and is definitely in the interests of the children, parents and the public. In conclusion, we stand by our submissions and reports prepared either by or with the assistance of highly qualified experts. This is the wrong development in the wrong location with unacceptable impacts. We submit that approval of this proposal would be contrary to the public interest and the residents of Curtin Place ask our elective representatives to refuse this development application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Cole. Next person on my list is-
Mayor, I might suggest that number eight come forward and then the other two are together, otherwise it's going to split up the subject.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. If Ken Mitchell would like to come forward?
Madam Mayor and councillors, 20 Curtin Place is not the right location for a childcare centre when it comes to traffic, access and parking for the following reasons. The car park will overspill onto Curtin Place during pick-up and drop-off periods. In the event that the car park is full, the driver would need to reverse back onto Curtin Place. This raises safety concerns considering that parents and children would be sharing the driveway to access the site. Safety concerns regarding speeding vehicles and vehicles cutting the corner and the parking of cars on either side of the road, reducing the width of travel lanes to one, results in an increased risk of collision. There are no footpaths in Curtin Place which heighten safety concerns particularly in inclement weather and in frosty winter mornings and dark winter evenings. The proposed driveway dimensions on the plans will result in approaching onto the driveway of 18 Curtin Place. There is inadequate driveway width proposed to accommodate two-way passing vehicles. The car park is not compliant with the number and size of spaces, no turning bay, insufficient clearance to open car doors, the swept paths test inadequate in terms of the manoeuvring area, for example, a car in P1 could collide with the staff car in P5 when attempting to exit. It is unclear how the staff can access spaces P6 and P7, and also how the garbage truck can collect the waste, as bollards are to be provided along the walkway into the proposed centre and the manoeuvring area is already highly constrained. The location of Birm, Speedhump and Rain Garden will affect parking space P4, which will result in the parked car being on a slope when parked and unable to access the passenger side of the vehicle. There's a lack of sight distance at the driveway. There are three driveways within 10 metres on the curve of Curtin Place, with one now being proposed for a commercial development with a minimum of 82 movements a day. The residents commissioned a peer review of the proposal by a qualified and experienced road safety auditor, who concluded there are several areas of non-compliance, safety concerns and an increased risk of collision. We, being long-term residents of Curtin Place, have been witness to countless near misses and accidents caused when drivers cut the corner and lose control in front of 20 Curtin Place. Most recently, a member of one of our families nearly ended up body surfing on the bonnet of a car as the vehicle cut the corner whilst they were jogging directly in front of 20 Curtin Place. In conclusion, we ask our councillors to see this proposed development's traffic, access and parking as non-compliant, unsafe and presenting an unacceptable risk of collision, and thus refuse this development application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Mitchell. If I could please ask Mike DeVink to come forward?
Mayor Coleman, deputy mayor Ring, councillors and administrators, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Mike DeVink, project director for the Lake Lisle Pump Hydrar project, and I'm speaking with regards to matter 6.6. I've been involved in the consultation and engagement effort since 2021 from the First Town Hall in Waleroang, through early feasibility to the establishment of Project HQ on Main Street, and the most recent engagement programme we ran in October and November this year. And I can say with confidence, we have worked tirelessly to keep the community informed and consulted wherever and whenever we could. Since 2021, we've published 13 newsletters, hosted 138 meetings, attended 36 community events, run 24 print and 12 radio ads, fielded 360 email and phone inquiries, received more than 200 visitors to Project HQ, published 159 social media posts. I can also confidently say that community feedback has genuinely helped shape the project. You told us biodiversity, especially the platypus, is your number one concern. We responded with strengthened ecological studies, species-specific protection measures and continuous monitoring commitments. You told us Lake Lisle must remain a recreational place. That feedback now helps inform access planning and construction sequencing. We've always said the lake will remain open for recreation. You told us local jobs and apprenticeships must be prioritised. That message is shaping our workforce and procurement strategies. This includes commitments to new apprenticeships through the project. You told us visual impact matters. We relocated the upper reservoir so that it's not visible from Lithgow. Your suggestions from revegetation to colour treatment are being directly assessed. Across the themes of environment, recreation, visual impact, workers' accommodation, traffic, cultural heritage, economic participation, neighbour relations, the community's feedback is embedded in the decisions that are helping shape the project and are included in the EIS. Councillors, the success of consultation is not measured by unanimous agreement. The true measure is whether people had real opportunities to be heard and whether these views helped influence the work, and the evidence shows they have. EDF and Energy Australia remain committed to deep respectful engagement through EIS exhibition in 2026 and beyond, because the future of energy in New South Wales should continue to have Lithgow at its heart, just as it has for generations. And in closing, we will continue to work closely with the council to ensure it is provided with appropriate, accurate and timely information about the Lake Lisle Pump Hydrar project, for it to be shared with the community as it becomes available. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, Mr DeVink. I've got, I'm not quite sure if this is correct, I've got Breeek apprenticeship, you can correct me when you come up.
Thank you.
Mayor Coleman, deputy mayor Ring, councillor and administrator, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Briek Penanek, general manager hydro power for EDF Power Solutions Australia, and I'm speaking about my matter 6.6. EDF Group is one of the world's largest diversified low-carbon energy producer, operating in 13 countries and employing over 180,000 people worldwide. We own and operate more than 400 hydro power plants. We know that delivering successful, long-term energy projects relies on strong relationship with the communities who host them. It is because of that experience we choose to partner with Energy Australia on the Lake Lisle Pump Hydro project. We see a strong site, the right geology and a region with a broad decades-long identity in energy generation. With regard to consultation and information about the project, consultation for this project has been extensive, gathering thousands of pieces of feedback from community and stakeholders since 2021. This feedback has shaped the design, the assessment and the mitigation strategies that will be published in the EIS in 2026. Turning now to the most recent phase, our latest engagement from October to November this year delivered one of the most intensive consultation programmes undertaken for major energy projects in this region. The six-week programme, so 10 pop-up engagements, 15 stakeholder briefing, 300 certified conversations, 260 plus feedback points. We also published 10 videos and 12 fact sheets summarising key information that will be made available in the EIS when it goes on public exhibitions. This consultation is recorded for the upcoming What We Heard summaries that we will publish soon. In closing, we know that conversation about change, about land, recreation, heritage and local character are confronting. This is why respect and transparency are essential. This is an exciting project, a project that will bring hundreds of local jobs and $400 million of economic activity every year during construction. Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor and councillor, for your time and for your leadership on the health and delivery of communities.
Thank you, Mr Penatch. I think I said that right, that time? Rich Evans, if you'd like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors, staff. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of item 2.2 for the foundations in Portland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for also the partnership and vision councillors show and as we brought the foundations' vision to life. The foundations represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity for Portland and the wider Lithgow area. After years of planning and community engagement, we're now at the point where real growth, real jobs and real economic activity are within reach, and this DA before you this evening is the next major step in turning a long-held vision into a working precinct that delivers for the whole LGA. We're committed to revitalising this historic site in a way that honours its heritage, creates new industries, new housing options and new reasons to people to visit, live and invest in our region. With your support, the foundations will drive population growth, support local businesses, attract new skills and families and build long-term confidence in the Lithgow economy. I want to thank the council team for their collaboration over the years that we've been planning this proposal. Your willingness to work with us, to share ideas and to help shape the development that serves the community has been invaluable. This kind of partnership is what gets regional New South Wales moving forward. We're very proud to be investing in the future of the Lithgow region, and if the DA is approved tonight, with the imminent opening of the brewery, we'll have cause to celebrate in Portland and put Portland back as the town that built this region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Evans.
Mayor, I was just wondering whether the council would like to bring forward 211, because the residents are all here and then we'll go into the financial statements.
It's up to the will of the council.
Question, what time are we expecting the auditor to come online? Because if she's waiting now, we should really do that and get that out of the way. Then I'm happy to do 2.1.
Well, I've got two merrill minutes, so it's at the beginning of the programme anyway.
Okay.
So we'll leave the programme as it is and we'll move straight to the auditor. If the auditor's ready, we've got presentation of financial statements for year ended the 30th of June 2025. I have a recommendation here in front of me, councillors. Can I have someone move the recommendation or is there any other motions that would like to come forward instead?
I'm happy to move.
You're happy to move? Can I have a second, please councillor? Are you happy to second? Is there any discussion or are you happy for me to put it? Happy for me to put it? I've put that, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. We'll have the presentation, please, if we could?
Thank you. Is everyone able to see my screen there? Yes, excellent. Good evening, Mayor, councillors, council executive and everyone else in attendance. Thank you for inviting me to attend and present my report on the conduct of the audit for Lithgow City Council. My name's Jodie Thomas and I'm the principal of Intentus, who act as audit service providers to the audit office. Tonight I'll be taking you through the results of our 2025 financial statement audit, the audit work programme for 2025 to 2028, focus areas for the upcoming local government sector report, financial results and analysis, and key infrastructure and cash management insights. I'll draw your attention to the work that the audit office performs in not only financial audits, but performance audits that they report to Parliament. Performance audits assess whether the activities of government entities are carried out effectively, economically efficiently and in compliance with relevant laws. The Audit Office's annual work plan for 2025 to 2028 was released in August 2025. The work plan explains how the audit office decide what to focus on, what they intend to cover in 2025 to 2028 for all sectors that they audit. This three-year plan gets updated annually by the auditor general and can be revised along the way. You can subscribe to the Audit Office website to get the updates automatically. The key themes for the Audit Office work programme for 2025-2026 are efficiency and the optimal use of public resources, grants administration, major capital projects, climate-related risks and opportunities, and First Nations communities. The focus of financial audits will be on financial reporting to inform users, financial sustainability and analysing data to identify warning signs, effective internal controls to help safeguard assets and ensure integrity in financial processes, and governance frameworks which promote accountability, compliance and ethical financial management. The planned performance audits include long-term financial planning with a series of audits designed to evaluate the effectiveness of long-term financial plans. Audit risk and improvement committees' effectiveness in providing independent oversight and how councils support these committees. Performance management and monitoring, including reviewing compliance with the integrated planning and reporting framework and performance measurement practices. Major capital projects, including the effectiveness of council oversights for large capital infrastructure- Major capital projects, including the effectiveness of council oversights for large capital infrastructure projects. Climate risk and adaptation, including how councils are preparing for and managing climate risk in asset and service planning. And waste management and evaluating how well councils understand and address service needs and obligations. Uh, the areas of focus for the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five Local Government Sector Report to Parliament include financial audit outcomes. Financial sustainability, I T, cyber and artificial intelligence. Major projects and internal controls and governance, um, including fraud control and the key findings reported in management letters. I will now turn to our report on the conduct of the audit. Um, we have completed our audit of the general purpose financial statements and special purpose financial statements. I am pleased to report to you today that we have issued a clean audit opinion for your council's financial statements for the year ended thirty June, two thousand and twenty five. Which means that the financial statements contain no material misstatements and present fairly. The Office of Local Governments Code sets out what needs to be covered by the report on the conduct of the audit. Uh, looking at the income statement for the year, um, rates and annual charges revenue increased by one point three million. To forty point four million uh due to rate increases of four and a half percent um and various increases in annual charges. Um, and this was offset by decreases in parking rates received. Grants and contributions revenue decreased by seven point six million in two thousand and twenty four, twenty five. Mainly due to a six point five million dollar decrease in non-cash contributions, donated assets. Um, a one point one million dollar decrease in developer contributions. A one point four million dollar decrease in transport-related grants such as fixing local roads. And also receiving fifty percent of the financial assistance grants for two thousand and twenty five, twenty six in advance as at thirty June. Um, as compared to eighty five percent that was in, received in advance in the previous year. Operating, the operating result from continuing operations um shows that council had a negative operating result of eight point one million dollars. For the year ended thirty June, two thousand and twenty five. This was twenty eight point two million lower than last year. Much of this decrease was due to lower grants and contributions, um, which reduced by seven point five million. Higher other expenses, um, by seven point one million, um. That was particularly impacted by the write-back of rejected, um, funding claims. And also increased materials and services expense, um, by five point three million. So after deducting capital grants and contributions, the net operating result before capital grants and contributions. Reduced to a negative twenty five million dollars, which is a decrease of twenty six point eight million from the prior year. Um, this shows that without capital grants and contributions, um, the council would, would be making a loss. Um, council's operating result from continuing operations for the year was twenty eight million dollars lower than the twenty three, twenty four result. Um, in two thousand and twenty four, twenty five, grants and contributions of twenty three point nine million. Decreased by seven point five million or twenty three point nine percent, um, due to higher natural disaster funding received in the prior year. Other expenses of eight point four million dollars increased, um, by seven point one. Um, as I mentioned previously, that was due to a write-back of rejected grant claims. Materials and services, um, also increased by five point three million dollars. Um, due to restoring of assets damaged by natural disaster. And depreciation, amortisation and impairment of non-financial assets expense increased by one point nine million dollars on the previous year. As mentioned previously, um, grants and contributions revenue decreased by seven point five million. Um, again, that was due to receiving fifty percent of the financial assistance grants. Um, for the twenty five, twenty six year in advance as compared to eighty five percent in the prior year. Um, there was a decrease of six point five million of non-cash contributions. Mainly due to one-off developer contributions in twenty three, twenty four at South Bow and Fells. Um, including roads and bridges, drainage, sewage, et cetera. Uh, there was a decrease of one point one million of developer contributions recognised during the year. Um, and also a decrease of one point four million of transport-related grants, um, such as fixing local roads. Uh, this, um, graph shows the council's unrestricted current ratio for the current and prior to financial years. Uh, the unrestricted current ratio is specific to local government. And represents council's ability to meet its short-term obligations as they fall due. Uh, the ratio measures the amount of unrestricted current assets to specific purpose liabilities. Uh, in two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, the average unrestricted current ratio for, um, regional councils was three point one times. Um, and as you can see, council's unrestricted current ratio of one point six three is below that average. Um, the significant decline was mainly due to using, um, natural disaster money received in two thousand and twenty three, twenty four. Um, for various projects, therefore reducing the current assets. Um, I'll now touch on cash and cash equivalents and investment balances. Um, so looking at the cash position, um, council at thirty June, two thousand and twenty five had a total cash and investment balance of fifty eight point nine million. Uh, this decreased by twenty two point five million, um, from eighty one point four million in the prior year. This year, fifty point one million dollars, um, is externally restricted. This mainly consists of specific purpose, um, for unexpended grants. Um, unspent funds on domestic waste reserve, unspent funds on water supply authority and also developer contributions. Um, I will go into more detail on the next slide, um, in relation to that. Um, so at thirty June, two thousand and twenty five, council reported a positive cash investment balance after external restrictions of eight point eight million dollars. Um, a compliance risk for councils is breaching legislation by using externally restricted funds for an inappropriate purchase. Um, therefore there is a need for effective controls to manage externally restricted funds and prevent non-compliance and/or financial difficulties. So this, um, graph shows the sources of externally, externally restricted cash, cash equivalents and investments. Um, in two thousand and twenty four, twenty five, the council's main sources of externally restricted cash, cash equivalents and investments. Included, um, specific purpose unexpended grants of thirty three point eight million dollars. Um, which decreased by ten million dollars mainly due to capital works completed related to natural disaster funding. Um, domestic waste management charges of eight point five million dollars, um, which decreased by around three hundred thousand. And also sewer charges of around three hundred thousand, which decreased by six point one million. Mainly due to works performed and also their repayment of a loan for one point two million dollars. Um, in two thousand and twenty three, twenty twenty four, the available cash to cover expenses was an average of seven months, um, across regional councils. Um, council's ratio was one point five months as at thirty June, two thousand and twenty five. Um, so as at thirty June, two thousand and twenty five, council's cash is mainly, um, so eighty five point one percent restricted for external purposes. General fund expenses were negatively impacted by, um, the rejected grant claims during the year, which totaled, um, around seven point two million dollars. Uh, so I'll now touch on the infrastructure, property, plant and equipment balances. Um, so this, um, graph shows how much council spent on renewing and purchasing assets in two thousand and twenty four, twenty five. Uh, so council renewed twenty three point two million dollars of infrastructure, property, plant and equipment during the twenty four, twenty five financial year. This is mainly spent on roads and repairing assets damaged by natural disasters. Um, a further twelve point two million dollars was spent on new assets, including capital work in progress. Um, and roads, bridges, footpaths and other road assets. Um, the level of renewals and new assets in the current financial year compared to the prior year are fairly consistent. Um, totaling thirty five point four million dollars this year as compared to thirty four point seven million dollars in two thousand and twenty three, twenty four. Um, renewals in both years mainly concentrated on capital work in progress, um, roads, bridges and footpaths. Which is mainly aligned with the capital grant fundings received. Uh, so I'd just like to extend my thanks to the finance team for their cooperation during the conduct, um, of our audit. And I'm happy to take in questions if anyone might have.
Any questions, councillors? Councillor Tassos?
Uh, thank you. Jody, I just wanted to ask some questions in regards to, um, we've still got a fair amount of disaster funding still to be, to be spent. Um.
Yes.
Uh, could you tell me what's, what's sort of left after all with taking all that away? Um, where, where is the council sitting in regards to the future over the next three years?
Uh, without the, the funding, I, if we go back to the, um, the previous slide on the. Cash and cash, um, restrictions. It does show, um, that it is fairly borderline as once the internal cash allocations are taken into account. So it's certainly something that council will have to manage cash flows very closely. Um, moving forward to, to make sure that those external restrictions aren't breached and that. Um, that you have continuing cash to, to meet obligations.
Yeah, you, you indicated that it's, uh, we're basically sitting at, um, six, one and a half months, which is basically six weeks versus. Uh, other councils in the area are seven months cash at hand. Um, surely that must concern you in regards to where we're going because if, once the, all the, um. Disaster funding is spent, we won't be making any interest off all that sitting in the bank at the moment.
No, that's right. So it will impact on your, um, interest income moving forward. So yeah, as I, as I mentioned, it's certainly a situation that will need to be managed quite closely by, um, by the executive team.
And, and finally, the last question is, uh, in principle, is it con, is it considered to be a good practice to borrow funds for asset renewal such as roads?
Uh, oh, look, I think, um, that's certainly a, a decision for management. Um, you know, borrowings are always there as an option to, to aid cash flows, but, um, you know, it's certainly not something that. That you would want to be relying on moving forward. Um, but again, you know, I'm not sure if management has any comments on that.
Uh, I, the reason I ask that question is because we're looking at, uh, a, an item tonight where we're looking at a possible twenty million dollar loan. To fund roads over the next six years and we have to pay that back within that six years. So that's the reason I brought that question up. So are we in a position as a council or is this going to be, uh, dive in after a couple of years? We'll have a special rate variation which is very concerning to the rate base. We, we need some sort of determination, not from within the council but from outside the council to tell us which is the best way to go.
Yeah, look, I, I appreciate, um, your question there. I think, um, you know, as auditors, we need to be very careful that we maintain our independence. And don't get involved in, in making, um, or, or giving advice to, to clients on, um, moving forward with issues such as that. So unfortunately, that's not something that I'm in a position to, to weigh in on.
Thank you.
Councillor Ring?
Um, yes, Jody, just one question. Is there anything in this report that rings alarm bells for you? Is there anything in it that you believe would trigger a forensic audit?
Uh, look, forensic audits, um, are usually entered into if there's. Um, some sort of indication of any fraud, um, or things like that. I, uh, we as auditors have an obligation to consider the risk of fraud in our audit whilst that's not our sole purpose of our audit. Um, there is an audit standard specifically in relation to, um, to fraud. So we certainly, um, perform another, a number of audit procedures considering the risk of fraud. And, um, there's certainly nothing that has indicated that there's any, um. Any fraud that's occurred throughout the year and certainly no material, um, fraud based on the procedures that we've performed. Um, yeah, I, I suppose I would probably need to understand a little bit more around why, um. What you would be looking for from a forensic audit.
Sorry, I'm not looking at, just asking the question. We've got a matter raising later in the meeting. Um, I just wanted to get clarification on this report.
Yeah, certainly, there's certainly nothing flagged there that, um. You know, that's, that would indicate to me that a forensic audit would be required, but again, it depends on the purpose for which you're looking at it for.
No, thank you, Jody. And, and in relation to borrowing, borrowing is a normal part of, uh, council operations. And I've been at meetings, uh, with government officials in the past where they've complained about councils not borrowing adequate funds. Um, just wanted to make that statement. You don't have to answer it.
Yeah, no, look, most certainly, it's, um, it's a liquidity management tool as well, so, um. Yes, obviously dependent on the circumstances. Does anyone else have any further questions?
Yeah, thanks, Jody. Just one quick question. It was in relation to the fraud, um, question you just answered. You'd have to have a, would you have to have a specific fraud incident that you would go looking for in a forensic, um, audit? Or you wouldn't just do a forensic audit just as a, a fishing, fishing ex, ex, expedition?
Well, um, look, I'm not a forensic auditor myself, so I really couldn't say it would all, all depend on the scope for which you engaged the. Forensic auditor, if that was a consideration. Um. Yeah, so there, there's certainly nothing there that, um, that would make. That would indicate to me that there was a fraud in which to go looking for. Um, so yeah, um. Again, that decision would be one for, for management and council.
Hi, Jody. In your view, with how our financials are at the moment. Would you think that we would be able to afford four point one million dollars for the next six years to pay back a loan?
Look, I think that might be more of a question for management to look through their, um, the cash flow projections. Moving forward, our audit is at a point in time, um, whilst we do consider the fine concern assumption and look. We only look forward a period of twelve months, um, from the date of signing the audit report. Um, so it's quite a, a reduced or condensed period that we look at that for. Um, so management would definitely have more information there as far as cash flow projections over a longer period.
Getting a discharge trial plan and monitoring programme. And I understand that that's been a thorn in Director Trapp's side for a while. So I'm really pleased with that outcome and the team are working. Forward in regards to ensuring that that happens. Do you have any, maybe you would like to? Yeah, so maybe the General Manager or Director Trapp would like to add to that?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Just to, to add, in other cases, we have followed up. With other ministers in writing with a copy of briefing papers for them and will continue until we receive a response.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor. I think the outcome for the Kowloon Bolins sewage plant is all long overdue. It's going to save us some money because we're not going to be bringing in material to Lithgow for treatment. So it's a great outcome.
We've got a long way to go to make sure that it happens and I know that Director Trapp is working very hard to ensure that that goes through. Director Trapp, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, it's been a pretty long road to actually get to this point. But, um, yeah, it's an excellent result. We're, um, working on currently with the team, trying to put in place that plan. So we look at a number of options, not just, um, environmental discharge with recycling the water to be able to use for some environmental benefit. Um, along the way and in that area. So yeah, it's, um, it'll be a very good result at the end.
Any further? Any further comments on the, yes, councillor Marnie?
Uh, just firstly, thank you, Mayor, for taking forward a, a host of really important issues. Um, just wanna touch on the Cullen Bull and Sewer Triggle Plant, uh, described as a thorn in the side of. A Mister Trap, um, seeing that that will probably be transferred to the site of Mister Edgcombe. Uh, just given the transport of tankers into Portland. Uh, it, and the impact it had on the road, is there, and sorry, this question without notice, is there. Any proposed, um, restoration of that impact?
Director Trap?
I'll maybe to take it on notice. I, I, I appreciate that.
Do you have a response?
We'll take that on notice.
Take it on notice?
Yeah. Yeah, we have spoken with residents previously about that and, um, through the process, trying to make sure that we do get a good. And full understanding of what damage that road may have taken on during that time period. The road certainly. Um, had some more traffic due to the restrictions we've had on the S D P, but, yeah, we'll make that assessment and then be able to, um, um, better inform. Um, piece of information for the council.
Okay.
You happy with that, councillor?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Right. Any further commentary? Uh, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. The next one I've got is. Um, Fire and Rescue Portland four two three, time is of the essence when saving lives. Currently, the distance from, I'll move the recommendation, which is that council writes to the minister for emergency service, J H D B on behalf of. Fire and Rescue Portland four two three, four, yeah, four two three, recommending that they utilize, that they are utilized as a resource in time. Critical accidents to administer first aid and debridulation prior to the arrival of a New South Wales ambulance. So currently, the distance from Lithgow to Portland is approximately twenty to twenty five kilo- kilometers. Despite being able to drive under lights and sirens, the delay from Lithgow to Portland still presents a delay in potentially. Life-saving treatment for Portland residents. The Fire and Rescue, Fire and Rescue Portland have the capabilities. And can be on the scene to administer initial life-saving treatments, providing early defibrillation. Oxygen resuscitation and reducing rescuer fatigue. To provide high-quality CPR or supportive treatment until a New South Wales ambulance can take over. Portland Fire and Rescue have an average alert to code one, which is the time that the staff are paged. To the time the truck is out the door of the station, so roughly five minutes and fifty seven seconds. Team forty three, four two three is not seeking to become community's first responders. They want to be utilized as a resource. To then delay in distance that currently exists for ambulance to get on the scene, so they wanna bridge it. Team four two three explained to me at the Portland Light, the Christmas Tree event. On thirtieth of November twenty twenty five, that they are passionate about their community and want to bridge the gap with a service level agreement within. The memoration of understanding under the L E M C, alternatively, this proposal could be met through education to local New South Wales. Ambulance resources around the capabilities. New South Fire, New South Wales, Portland have been able to bridge the initial delay in potential life care when a kayak arrest occurs. They've, uh, they've attended a number of accidents and this is truly an opportunity to save our residents' lives. Because delay, uh, delays of the essence. Yes, councillor Fredericks.
From my understanding, when it comes to medical emergencies, if it's not an accident. That automatically goes through ambulance New South Wales, gets dispatched straight to them. So whilst I'm all for these, because it will be beneficial, is it possible too for us to do some advocacy? With, um, Ryan Parks, to say we can get a, another, um, ambulance station set up in Portland. To service further out that way, if wait times are that issue.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we'll add that to the list if you like, add it to our advocacy shopping list, if you're happy with that. So we'll note that, that we write to also Minister Ryan Parks about a second ambulance station in Portland. Yep. We can only ask, they can only say no, that will add it to our shopping list.
Mayor Coleman?
Uh, yes, councillor Goodwin.
There are also Good Sam's messages that get sent out to people who have signed up to the Good Sam's app. Who have specialist skills who are around the area, so if something does happen, those, uh. The messages would, would get sent out and also, um, for rescue four eight three. Um, at Valeroang would also get turned out if, um, if something major happens and. And the, uh, four two three are available as well.
So would you like to add something, councillor?
I'll just, um.
Oh, you're just adding comments?
Yep.
Oh, okay, good. Councillor Tassos?
No, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, about, um, it was probably fifteen to twenty years ago, there was a, an incident on the Backcullen Road. Um, where a, yeah, uh, an ambulance, uh, I think it was either misdirected or didn't have the correct address. And the person passed away. At the time, I did suggest that we, uh, the Portland community and other communities look at a rapid response ambulance. Which exists in a number of, uh, small community towns. Uh, this is fire and rescue. Uh, I think there's probably some demarcation disputes as to who does first aid and that sort of thing, depending on who gets called out. Uh, it might be an opportunity for the, as you said, the health minister, Mister Park, to, and the community in particular. If the community wants a rapid response ambulance, they, and they're prepared to help out and do that particular service, it could be that. These fire officers are also rapid response as well, because if that's what they wanna do. But there's generally a vehicle and all the equipment that goes with it. So I think it's also, I'm not sure that this is gonna work with the fire and rescue. But I think it's an opportunity to come back and start doing a rapid response, uh, community drive to see whether that is what the community want. I think it's what they should want because it is too far away, but it's also available for other communities. For example, K P D i- is even further out. Uh, for someone out there to get that moving as well. So I'm sure the council would support it. And I'm sure the health department would support it if the community were to support it.
Um, so would you like to add something that we, what would you like to include?
That we write to the health minister as well in regards to the establishing a, uh, what are the processes for establishing a rapid response ambulance?
So we'll make that another point, since we get that.
Mayor Coleman, I couldn't agree more with anybody that wishes to have, uh, an ambulance in the Portland, um, Evan Malera Wayne. You know, that's close proximity and towards K P D, but for probably fourteen years, we have actually, um. Lobbyed for that. Times have changed, the governments change, uh, there may be a way that we can get, um, uh, ambulance in Portland. But because it's such a small town, uh, it is very difficult. Uh, and I think that unless we get funding to help it on its way, uh, unfortunately, I cannot imagine it happening, but I am definitely for it occurring.
Thank you.
Just one, one more.
Yes, councillor Goodman?
Um, can I just raise that this, this should go through the, uh, L E M C, um, prior to anything. Going to the minister, I think we should have a.
Can I just add to that? They've actually tried that. That's why they've come to me, councillor Goodman. They spoke to me last night. And they said they've actually put a proposal to the L E M C and they're not getting any traction on it. So then they came to me. That's why I'm raising it here. So, but I'm happy to.
Probably a reason for that on that one.
May, perhaps, perhaps there is, but I'm happy to raise it with the L E M C again, but. They, they particularly requested it come here.
That I'm sure if we didn't have a, uh, endorsement from the L E M C, I don't think we'll get much traction from the government.
Perhaps not, but we can only do our best. Councillor Marnie?
I won't, uh, reiterate what the councillors have said. They've, they've expressed it well. Um, I do note that we do have a proposition in front of us, uh, for major residential subdivision in Portland, so. There is a growing need and, uh, the mayor may wish to also reference, uh, the changing face of Portland as far as. The population center potentially.
Absolutely, councillor Marnie. We can put that in the letters. If there's no further commentary, or there's no further, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move on to two point one. Curtain Place childcare facility. So councillor Goodwin, you're moving the recommendation.
Yep.
On the page. Uh, is there a second to for that? Uh, councillor Evangelist, you're seconding that? Okay. Councillor Goodman, you'd like to speak?
Mayor Coleman, I, how wonderful is it to have a business who wants to develop in our town? Um, they wanna spend their money here, they wanna employ our locals, and it will provide a much-needed service. I hope it encourages others to do the same and show that Lithgow L G A is open for business.
Oh, is that it? Sorry. Oh, that's it. Very good. Uh, councillor Evangelist?
Uh, thanks, man. Um, I spoke at this, at length in the council. Um, last time it was brought up, so I'll just reiterate a few points. There's clearly a need and desire for additional childcare facilities in our region. If our current childcare was only operating at forty percent, I don't know why anyone would bother opening. So clearly, I don't know where that statistic came from. So where do we put them? On a busy street opposed to a quiet one? Industrial area, far away from families? The reasoning for placing them in neighbourhood streets is to provide a familiar setting for children. And they are conveniently located and don't have any current congestion from high, highly frequented, frequented zones. From the public gallery, I've heard that it's a quiet street and a dangerous one, so I'm a bit confused about that. No matter where you go, someone will not be happy. I can assure you if the vendor went into any quiet street. Knocked on doors, your action would be the same. They'd get the same level of resistance. I totally get it. No one likes change. I never think as a council that we should base our decisions on whether we might lose a court case if a rejected application is challenged. However, just in twenty twenty five, fifty three childcare centres that were rejected by council, mostly over traffic. Were later overturned by the Land Environment Court. I'm sure they had their experts as well. That is a real statistic and, I mean, they've already spent money on it, that's on them. But I, I just think we have to consider what's important for the town as a whole, as councillor Goodman said. And they have met all the criteria. They have met the regulations, parking, traffic, it's all. If it hasn't been met, it will be met, and if it's not met, they won't get approval from the, the, um. Authority responsible for it. The biggest problem of childcare centres are the operators. There's like four hundred inquiries at the moment through poor operators. I did my research on these guys. They're an excellent operator. What's more important, having an excellent operator in town or one that's dodgy, that's in a location that no one seems to care about? So I, I really encourage the councillors to approve this, um. And, you know, just by looking at that, fifty three were overturned. I, I think we really need to accept the reality of what this is and where it is. And it's just, like I said, no one wants them in their street. They gotta go somewhere. So I, I urge the councillors to approve the D A.
Move an amendment.
Uh, what's your amendment?
My amendment is the development application, D A zero three three. Dash two five, be refused as it is deemed not to be in the public interest.
That's a direct negative. You can do, you could do a foreshadow.
I'll do a foreshadow.
Foreshadow. Um, and we'll come back to it. Councillor Tassos?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I speak against this, uh, D A. Um, if you've lived in, if you've lived in Lithgow for many, many years, Curtain Place is. You don't even know where it is. It's one of those streets that, that's hidden, uh, because it's so quiet. Um, that, as, as was said from the public gallery, there's, there's no footpaths. They've never asked for footpaths. They'd probably be entitled to them because people do walk through there, but there's no footpaths. Uh, the, it's, it's in some ways, uh, a street that has, uh, four corners on it. Um, it's always been narrow, um, uh, it's, it's just such a quiet and placid street. To bring a commercial activity into a street like Curtain Place i- in, is not in the public interest. The, all the reasons that were put forward by the public gallery are clearly there. What, what amazed me was the fact that. This house is on a corner with a single driveway. I think the comment was made in the gallery that we have three driveways within ten metres. And this is the middle driveway. Uh, I, I had a look at, uh, I was, I was gonna try and put a picture up on, on Google, but. In, in looking the street up on Google, there's actually a, a car that's parked on the, on the, on the, uh, the verge, on the nature strip. The reason it's parked there is because if it was parked on the street, it would cause an accident, which is the house next door. So, uh, you, these, um, people that are gonna be visiting this are, are gonna be all over the street, all over the corners. Um, I, I don't know how you can go up and down that driveway, no matter what you put up there. And, and Mister Mitchell brought up some issues in regards to the parking on site. It's, it's absolutely bizarre. This, we, I've got nothing. Uh, against the develop, the developers or the proponents. Uh, there's nothing in regards to what they do or didn't do. But this is the wrong commercial activity in, in a com- in a residential street. Uh, uh, it'd be like putting it in, in Marengaru. Are we, are we prepared to put a childcare centre in Marengaru Fields? Because that's really what we're doing here. This is sort of like, uh, Marengaru Fields going back fifty or sixty years. It's just absolute madness to try and think that this is what it is. There has to be better locations, more parking, more access. Uh, eighty-five movements, yeah, coming, coming and going. It's just not going to work in that, like, not in, not only just in Curtain Place, but in that particular residential. Home that it is at the moment. Uh, you can't change it to business and then put eighty-five, yeah, and have all these. Uh, movements of cars, um, every day of the week, uh, fifty weeks of the year. It's just, it's. It's a recipe for disaster. There must be a better place to put this up. Surely there are others. I'm not worried about the occupancy rate in regards to what's around town, but the reality is. It's a residential house. It backs onto, it backs onto, um, um. Muscat Parade. I mean, a- and, and all those houses above it look, look straight over into the childcare centre. Uh, I'm not too worried about the noise, but it's just, tr- from a traffic point of view, it's absolutely bedlam coming and going in that street. Corners, parking, there'll be parking on the street, there won't be parking up and down, people walking up and down the driveway where there's traffic moving, coming and backwards and forwards. I, I, I just, it's a recipe for disaster in regards to some sort of an accident on site and in the street, and, uh, that's the reason I'm. I'll be in the public interest, uh, refusing this application. Thank you.
Councillor Fredericks?
Uh, I do have a couple of concerns with this particular proposal. One, the driveway is not big enough. For two cars to safely pass each other. In order for it to be large enough for that to occur, it has to encroach on council-owned land. Where we do, I think it's, um, the sewerage access, it's one of those. It's gonna have to be concreted around in order for cars to safely pass each other to go in and out of that driveway. Another concern is, for instance, between June twenty four and June twenty five, we had two hundred and twelve D V reports. We are seventeen out of a hundred and thirty L G As for domestic violence, which means there's a lot of protection orders out and about. So odds are you're gonna have at least one child there that's gonna be on a protection order from another parent. I can go and stand on the corner of March of, um, Muscat Parade. Walk down the backyard of one house that is only fenced on two sides, lean over, and I've got direct access to one of those kids. So there is safety issues in that. Now, I personally live about two hundred metres from Garry Daycare Centre Preschool. I hear those kids from my house most days. I can hear them squealing and joys, squealing and tantrums, so I understand the residents' issues with the noise. I believe it is the right project, just not in the right location. Every other daycare or preschool that we have in this town. Is on a corner block. It's not in the middle of a street with four or five houses surrounding it. So that is why I will vote against this in, for the public perception.
Move the motion be put.
I've got a procedural motion.
I'm happy to hear.
But we haven't had two, four, two against, yeah.
You have had two, four, two.
Yeah, but you, you're cutting debate, councillor Ring. Are you still?
What's in the code of meeting practice?
Yeah, I'm happy to put the procedural.
I think we should all have a right to talk about.
Yeah, we'll have the, councillor Statham, you will, once, once you have, once I put the procedural motion, if you vote it down, then we continue, okay? So I've got a procedural motion that I have to put. So all those in favour of the procedural motion? All those against, declare it lost. We go back to debate. Uh, who would like to speak next? Councillor Statham?
Thank you, Mayor Statham, uh, Mayor, sorry, Coleman. This has been a real contentious issue and I don't know that I've ever voted against staff approval before. Usually the recommendations from staff is a lot of work involved, many hours, many days, many months. Um, I believe this has come to a time now where we have to make a decision. Um, I believe this has come to a time now where we have to make a decision that's going to suit um, what I believe is the correct, um, way to go about this. And I don't approve of it. But I think what's happened is that Curtain Place is an unknown, uh, beautiful area, possibly one of the nicest in Lithgow, uh, that people care. They've got, and this isn't about really whether people care or not. This is about if it's right or wrong. And I've looked at it and gone over it. I've been down there now quite a bit. Uh, they've amended the original from thirty-nine to thirty-six places in the childcare centre. That's good news. There were fifty-six submissions, there were twenty-four objections and fourteen submissions. Now, were those fourteen submissions the positive ones for it to go ahead? Were they from Lithgow addresses? I hope they were. Uh, one paragraph that I'm going to read here is, um, eight children in Joey Room, two to three years with two staff. Twenty-eight children in the Koala Room, three to six years with three staff. How ridiculous. How can you have twenty-eight children with three staff and then eight children with just, um, two staff, with two staff? So I don't agree with that. I think that's really wrong. Uh, yes, there's been lots of mention of where it's looking over. I've seen that and I don't think it's suitable. The other interesting thing, it is considered that the proposed issue generally complies with irrelevant provisions of all applicable environmental planning and instrument uh, and regulatory provisions. The word generally worries me. Um, I think the other thing that I need to, um, speak about very briefly. Um, the submissions are important, there's no doubt about that, and there aren't a lot, but then it's not a big area. I can't for the life of me see up to seventy car parks, people parking, even if there's ten children sick. It is, I've been down there and I went down there again the other day with a friend. And, um, I met that person down there with her, their car. And I thought, this is not suitable. And I really want progress in this town. I think we desperately need it. But these children have got no knowledge of any traffic rules. And going and getting them every day and dropping them off, I just can't see that happening. I think that it's, um, uh, a decision that no councillor would have made easy. I think that we have to realise that there surely would be a better place for this, for this, um, undertaking. And I, I wish the people well that have got this childcare centre. It's nothing personal whatsoever, but I could not leave my grandchildren there, under five, with that amount of people in that smaller space. And by the time the, um, the director gets her, her car park and another two car parks, you know, that's up to seventy-eight or eighty car parks a day. I, I can't vote for something that's in such a contained area. And I think the people of Curtain Place have been through a terrible lot with this situation. And I think that they deserve to have some respect paid to them for the amount of work that they have put into this submission for us as councillors to actually direct our thoughts to having a negative outcome. I apologise for that, but we have to think about what we're doing. And I would hate any child to run out when there's other, that many traffic. It'd be like in a shopping centre. It's too dangerous. I'm very sorry.
Any further debate before I put the councillor Marnie?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, the issue, and many of the councils have spoken to it already, for me surrounds a safety issue. Um, having the free converging driveways in close proximity uh, creates a risk and this risk is amplified during winter when the start and finish times are in pre-dawn and dusk or thereabouts. Um, we have young children with limited situational awareness, you know, operating in amongst traffic. And my concerns are that I've, I've not yet been convinced that we're designing for those risks and for safety for those young children and designing it out. I think the parking, when treated as merely a compliance metric seeking to meet minimum standards, I'm already out of time, geez, right, okay, um, really needs to be considered in its complete environment and understanding that, um, it may technically appear to pass, but it fails in practice, uh, particularly in, in concert for the safety of young children. Um, the, the community's spoken about the potential eighty-two vehicle movements, which are significant. And a, a high percentage of those could occur in, in quick succession. Um, having children that have just started walking and children with limited situational awareness, I'm, I'm not convinced that we're, we're designing for safety. And safety is the biggest consideration occurring for childcare and, and coming from a number of different directions. But we as a council have an opportunity to get the design for safety right at the beginning, so, um, I'm afraid that this, I've yet to be convinced and I'm not in a position to support the, um, the, uh, development being accepted.
Thank you, councillor Marnie. Any further debate? Councillor Ring, uh, councillor Smith, sorry?
I think basically everything's been pretty well said and I, I agree with that everything's been covered and I can't actually agree with passing this, to be honest. Um, I'd like to know where council stands when you actually sort of want to pass something like this, if they ever did, where we haven't provided proper footpaths. And we all know the traffic situation. Is there a traffic, has there been a traffic plan done by council? Or has anybody, I assume the people that are not, that are opposing this done some sort of plan, which sounds excellent to me? But I don't think, has it been done by the proponent or has it been done by council? Because otherwise, I think it's just absolutely not on. So I'm definitely opposing it.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Is there any further debate? You, you spoke in councillor Fredericks, unless you've got a question? I can't take that, I'm sorry. Um, all right, so if there's no further speakers, I'm going to put the motion and the division at the same time. The code is silent, so we can do it both at the same time. Oh, sorry, you get to write a reply, councillor Goodwin. I'll come back to you. I apologise. Councillor Goodwin, write a reply.
Yes, listen, I don't think kids are going to be running wild outside these, uh, this facility. I'm, I believe the kids will be turning up and walked in by their parents and then walked out of the centre. It's a compliant development. Um, it's the, the, um, recommendation is for it to be approved. Um, and when this centre is built, it'll offer convenience for, for families in the area. Gives young people access to quality education. It allows for flexible hours for those who work non-traditional hours. Qualified professional staff, got support for parents, economic benefits, creates jobs. Healthy environments, um, they'll have food, physical activities and wellbeing for the families. If we vote against this, we may as well put a sign up in front of the, of Lithgow as we come in close for business. We obviously, we'll obviously see it when it goes to the, the Land and Environment Court.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Do you have to write a reply? Yep. I'm going to put the motion and do the division at the same time. There's nothing in the code that allows me, not allow me to do that. So I'm going to put it to you. All those in favour, please, all those in favour, please raise your hand.
Point of order, ma'am, point of order.
Yes?
You've got two motions. They can't be, you can't do, you've got to do the division after it.
No, there's nothing in the code that disallows that. I've had advice on this. I'm putting the motion and doing the vision at the same time. It's one action for two issues, two things. So I'm putting the motion and doing the division at the same time. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That's councillor Goodwin and councillor Evangelitis. All those against, please raise your hand and that's the division. Councillor Statham, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Taisas and councillor Coleman. The matter is lost. We go back to councillor Ring. You've got a foreshadow motion.
Yep, I'd like to amend point one of the original recommendation to read. Development application DA zero three three dash two five be refused as it is deemed not to be in the public interest. I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councillor Fredericks is happy to second that. Councillor Ring?
Um, I do agree with councillor Evangelitis on a couple of the comments made tonight. We really get the hands up on it back. Wrong development, wrong place, in the right, not, not in the right location. We're, we're making a decision based on law, not a motion. Councillor Evangelitis was right. The last twelve months has been on average one court case a week. They haven't all won. I went and reviewed court cases for the last five years and I downloaded twenty-five examples. And my decision's based on, not just case law, but on the New South Wales guidelines. And the reason we have numerous childcares being constructed at the moment and built is because the government is pushing for them. And, and there is legitimate needs. However, I do take on board comments from the president, Paul Mondo, of the Australian Childcare Alliance, that a lot of them are being built in the wrong area. They're not being built where the need is. Now, on page thirty-two of attachment two point one, section four point one five assessment, or two comments from the staff in relation to this development. This provides opportunities for social interactions and supports economic growth of Lithgow by supporting parents to return to work. Second is, this provides services to the overall local community and supports economic growth. There's nothing in the development application, nor in the report from council staff, that supports those two claims. Nothing. For all we know, there is an oversupply. There may not be. If there is an oversupply, it's not going to lead to growth, it's going to lead to a loss of jobs in some of the other facilities. My main reasons, and I'm going to be very succinct for refusing this, is the lack of pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian access risk to the proposed centre. The proposed parking and fencing at the front of the building would be visually jarring and inconsistent with the Curtain Place streetscape. Concerns with the implementation of the revised plan of management with respect to supervision and noise management. And the absence of a tracking, traffic and parking study, uh, which is clause C thirty-two of the New South Wales Child Care Planning Guidelines, which requires one to be prepared by the proponent and to assess the impact on the local community. It has not been done. It's not council's job to assess it. It is a proponent's job to submit a report. And from what I've read, the guidelines can be used as a basis for council to reject a claim. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, councillor Ring. Councillor Fredericks?
Well, deputy mayor Ring pretty much just got that in a nutshell, so I can remain silent.
Fabulous. Any further, um, commentary in this space? Comment? I'll just say that I'll be supporting councillor Ring's notice of motion that he's brought forward. I had residents come and see me and I took everything on board what they said. And then I actually went and visited the site again after I've done it previously. And I'm really concerned about the driveway. I'm concerned about safety of our children and it was a real concern to me. If there's no further commentary, I'll, councillor Tassus?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. If I may, with councillor Ring's approval, uh, as it is deemed not to be in the public interest and on, um, uh, safety and traffic management issues, I, I think that needs to be in there apart from, from, uh, just public interest if we, if there's a likelihood that something will go further.
Um, look, I'm not prepared to accept that because public interest does cover that. The legislation is very clear on what you can uh, reject an item on. I'm also hoping to defer to the director, Mr Elwood, for his advice. But my understanding is the legislation, the not in public interest would include those stuff.
Director Elwood, would you like to comment?
Uh, through yourself, ma'am. Uh, the, through the public interest, I could cover, uh, those elements. Uh, if the, uh, motion is passed, uh, by council and there is a form of, uh, challenge, uh, then the public interest would be reviewed by council and further detail would be prepared uh, and through the planning team, the development team, uh, but also taking into account that uh, judicial review and, uh, sorry, judicial process, uh, is the first port of call for any uh, assessment of challenge in, in most situations.
I, I, I'm, I'm happy with it as, as it stands. Um, I'll provide you with court cases that support what I've put up. And I'll provide you with additional information. Thank you.
Councillor Taisas, are you going to do an amendment or?
Um.
Or you leave it as is?
I think if we, unless we, unless we specify other than public interest, then, and if the voice of the room was the fact that it was about pu- uh, safety and traffic management, um, I think that needs to be specified, but if, you know, if it's not supported, I'm not happy to pursue it. I just don't want to leave it to a court to decide what public interest is.
Councillor Ring?
Um, the, the court will make a decision regardless. Public interest is difficult. Uh, but from my reading of, um, case law, they will look at everything there and there is a lot of information. Um, it's not just about the safety issues. There, there are a number of issues as I've, as I had stated. Um, but I think public interest covers the broad picture. I'm happy with it is.
Okay, so we'll leave it as is. Um, is there any further commentary? Okay, councillor Ring, write a reply?
Uh, put it, please.
Thank you. I'll put that, all those in favour, and please raise your hand. I'll do the division at the same time. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Taisas, councillor Coleman. Those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Goodwin and councillor Evangelitis, the motion was carried. Thank you. Uh, that was the division. I just did it.
I'll be leaving the room for the next item there.
Sorry, who's talking to me first? Councillor?
I'll be leaving now for the next one.
Yeah. So we did a motion that was lost, which would say that we approve. Councillor Ring put up a motion to say that we refuse. The DA's being refused. Okay, you can all go home. Right. We'll just give these people, lovely people, a minute. If you just want to grab a drink, councillors. Actually, we might do an adjournment. Can I have someone move an adjournment for five minutes? Councillor Fredericks, councillor Marnie. If there's no opposition, that's carried, um, fi- back in five minutes. Thank you. Councillors, I need a motion to go back into council. Councillor Fredericks, moving that way. Councillor Goodwin is seconding that. If there's no opposition, that's carried. We go back to normal council. Thank you. Councillor Ring has left because he has a pecuniary regards to this. Um, I've got a motion in, uh, so the, the item is two point two. Demolition of shed and subdivision into forty-three lots, thirty-eight Willowire Street, Portland. Do I have any motions, councillors? Is someone happy to move the recommendation? Councillor Goodwin's happy to rec, move the recommendation. Councillor Marnie's happy to second the recommendation. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, um, ma'am Coleman, this is a, a, a good report. Um, I think it needs to go for the, uh, the, the development of the, uh, area. And I'm, I'm happy with, I'm happy with the, uh, the report. There's nothing much more to say.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Councillor Marnie?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, again, i- it's a, it is a very good report with a, uh, a potential outcome which can be extremely beneficial to our community. Um, I've got a couple of points. I, I just, perhaps ask the councillors just to be aware of going forward. Um, we are getting dedications of public open space, which, um, in themselves, uh, demonstrates some uh, very good planning as far as keeping connectivity to the water bodies during the different stages of the subdivision. Uh, we need to be aware of the, um, the, the, um, cost impacts that will have on us as a council. There'll be new open spaces to manage. Um, also noting that we will get a water body. It's not the only water body we've managed. We've, we've got some experience and capacity of that. We'll also manage the drainage lines inputting into the water body. Uh, regulations change over time and we might find, as we're finding with the Cullen Bull and discharge, that there'll be a requirement to that there'll be a requirement to, uh, manage water quality issues. And also, uh, weed management issues. Having said all that, um, I think that's the, the actual dedication really enriches the, um, the subdivision with the, the, the diversity of public open space. But we've just got to walk into this with our eyes wide open that there is an additional cost. Um, I've had something to do with reserve management over many decades. Um, often you'll get, uh, leftovers which have no value, uh, being handed over to the council as a gift. Um, but I've looked carefully at these and these are really important as far as public connectivity as the the stage goes through. The other point I just wanted to, um, to mention them and I, I've sort of got an understanding that we are looking at one of the, uh, sheds being demolished on the, the site. Um, people would have heard through lots of the waste debate about repurposing and reusing, uh, building waste, uh, building materials. I need to get that other word out of the, the vein. Um, this is, there's an opportunity for resource recovery, which I understand is the intent. And there's already, um, some opportunities there. So, that's, that's my only comments. I, I think it's a, it's a really interesting transformation of Portland, um, what's, what's put in front of us, so.
Thank you, councillor Marnie. Uh, councillor Statham?
This is very exciting news. I've been on this since the very beginning in two thousand and thirteen, I think it began, or fourteen. And I'm absolutely delighted with, um, Martin and, and his wife and family, um, and to have Rich involved. It is something outstanding for Portland. I just want to ask one question as well. Is the open spaces that council are going to be provided with, is that due to the fact that, uh, that will create, um, work for council with mowing? Because I do remember recall quite a bit of toing and froing over the years with, uh, who's going to be prepared to do the mowing.
Director Edgum, can you answer that? Councillor Statham, please?
Yes, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Yeah, that's correct. In, in time, these will become, um, public spaces. It will be, it's only reasonable to expect that council will maintain those. We're in the process of, at the moment, of defining what those service levels will look like and the, and the resourcing impact. Um, and we'll develop that in collaboration with the foundation's developers. Um, and it's expected that the additional revenue generated by, you know, the rates income and those sorts of things will help contribute and offset those costs. So, we are looking to do this a little bit differently. We've never really assessed the impost, um, on council of bits of significant developments like this. We've just taken them on and tried to factor them into our existing resourcing. It's led to poor outcomes. We're looking to do things differently and engage more deeply with the developer in this, in this instance.
I'm delighted to hear that actually, because I know there was many months where they were going backwards and forwards, who's going to do the gardening. And on this big scale of, uh, the adventure of what's going on in Portland, the gar- the gardening or the mowing is really a small concern. However, we wanted to look immaculate when it is, uh, completed. The, um, the way forward for Portland looks like it's going to be very positive. And I think that, uh, to date, everything's going really well. And I congratulate Martin and Monica and the council for having the, um, the skills required to get this to, uh, be in the pipeline sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Statham. Any further comments on this or write a reply, councillor Goodwin?
No, just put the motion.
Happy to put. Sorry. Oh, sorry, I missed you councillor Smith. You weren't quick enough, sorry.
I'm just interested where the shed comes into it. It doesn't have any sort of orders with the shed or requirements or nothing like that. Is there anything there historical or nothing like that?
That answered for you. Who can answer that for me? Director Elwood? No, there's a no. Okay, that's great. Councillor Goodwin, write a reply or are you happy to put it? Happy to put it. Okay, I'm going to put it to you plus the division at the same time. So, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tissus and councillor Coleman. The matter's been carried. Thank you. Can someone please get councillor Ring?
Have a question, ma'am.
Yes?
Um, a number of items were circulated to be dealt with, my exception.
I'm going to do that at, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'm going to do that at council committee report. Because there's only three to do and that's where we'll, we'll put them there.
Thank you.
But thank you for bringing that to my attention. We're up to item two point three, which is. I'll move that way. Uh, okay, I've got a, I've got an alternative motion, but you, I'm happy for you to move what's on the page if you like, councillor Statham. Proposed Central West Academy of STEM Excellence. Are you all moving on what's on the page?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, and is there a second to further? That laps. I've already lapsed it, I'm sorry. I've got an alternative motion that I'd like to put forward. Can, can we have that on the screen? Thank you, Trinity. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Thank you. I'm moving that recommendation that you see in front of you. Do I have a second of? Thank you, councillor Marnie. Councillor Marnie's seconding that. Over the weekend, have you got the quarter in front of you? Yep. It's all up.
Can I please have a question? Did other councillors know about this? Did I not know?
No, it's just that I've got an alternative motion that I was ringing forward. No other councillor knows about it. Okay, so, over the weekend, it was brought to my attention that the Central West Academy of STEM Excellence was not raised with the director of the Educational Leadership Lithgow Network, Debbie Lee Hughes. Mrs Hughes only became aware of the proposal when she read the council business papers. If council in partnership, if council wants to go in partnership with the New South Wales Department of Education and wants to establish an academy of STEM, then, then I think it's best that we consult with the relevant stakeholders in regards to this proposal. Especially in regards to the name of the academy, the location of the academy, and that we encourage dialogue with private, with the private sector, TAFE and universities and industries. I have no problem with, with the STEM academy. But we definitely need to consult before we decide its location and its name. And that has what has lacked, which is what's been brought to my attention. So this is why I'm bringing it forward. Councillor Marnie?
Um, look, I, I concur your, your position, mayor, on this. Um, I, I'll, I'll talk to a couple of con- concerns about the, from the report or, or points I'd like to make out of the report, um, which I had in, in front of me prior to you bringing this, um, into place. So, there's a couple of, uh, issues I just wanted to, um, to talk to. Um, just a couple of terminology elements. We, we talk about STEAM and STEM in the same group and I don't want to sound like a complete pedant, um, on this. But they're slightly different things where the STEAM is looking at arts as well as, um, science and the, and the, and the, and the rest. So, so there's just a, a couple of points where it references both. I wanted to understand, um, the, in the terminology, the notion of the Central West Academy. Now, the Central West geographically for me, um, in my mind, if I'm asked where does I see the western boundaries, I'm looking probably at Dublin. So, I'm just trying to get clarity over, given that we're the primary financial partner as a council, um, in, in partnership with the Department of Education. I just, just want to understand what's, what's happening there. Um, I support what you put forward in the motion, mayor. And I'm happy to second it for the, for, so that we can discuss this. Um, obviously, the Department of Education is the primary partner. Uh, it's their workplace and their workforce that the, 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 uh, project will be managed within. So, I think it's important that we look to build on the existing partnerships that we have with, and you've stated here with the, uh, industry and education sectors. So, I just think it's a, maybe a misstep, um, that, that we can benefit from, uh, taking part in. Um, and I'd just like to, maybe through you, mayor, as a question of the staff, just to understand the, the title, um, as to whether we're seeing it as, and, and there was reference within other, um, uh, council areas. So, so I might just ask that question and I'll, and I'll leave my comment at that, please.
Um, would you like that answered now, councillor?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Mr Gurney?
Uh, through you, mayor. The, uh, name Central West Academy of STEM Excellence uh, came from correspondence and a proposal from, uh, an area of, it, it came from the Education Department. So, so we had that in a, uh, what's called a draft letter of intent, which is on Department of Education letterhead. So, um, I was particularly unaware that there hadn't been consultation within the Department of Education regarding this matter. So, that's obviously been brought to the mayor's attention. Uh, so, yeah, that's where the, the name came from, a proposal of another part of the Department of Education.
Sorry, ma'am, can I, I'll just respond. Thank you for the answer. Um, yeah, I, I, I suppose I'm, I'm looking at it, given that we're, we're putting a significant amount of money into it as a, as a Lithgow region. I understand, uh, there's value in bringing everyone up with the same tide. Um, but I would have expected if we were going to extend by name into other regions that there would be some co-contributions coming from there. I may misunderstand it. And, um, I'm very supportive of the concept of STEAM education. And I, and I'm noting that we go, we go from STEM to STEAM through the report. I, I'd just like to get some clarity in the, in the report. Um, developing children with critical thinking skills and problem solving skills makes for a very adaptive workforce. And the kids who are sitting at ten and twelve may well find that the industry sector's in front of them when they arrive well, on their way in their career at twenty or twenty-two, could be quite different. So, that ability, rather than vocational training where we pick out industries and we train for that industry, hoping that that industry will be there when they reach that age class. I actually, um, am very supportive of this. So, I think from what I'm seeing in the, the notice of motion, what the mayor is trying to achieve is making sure that, uh, the Department of Ed is at the centre of the placement of this education position and, and how they'll support it.
Thank you, councillor Marnie. Any further? Councillor Fredericks and then councillor Ring. Councillor Fredericks?
Well, I am a really big supporter of this, of STEAM. Okay, I am all for us funding it for the next two years, just so we can get the evidence and data behind us to then advocate even harder for the education system to start implementing it into our schools. For every student to be able to participate in. Now, I'm not going to go into much of a discussion to do with the budgetary analysis that we have. I'm assuming that is coming to the Emerging Economies Committee for a deeper dive into it and for a more detailed report, hopefully. But, yeah, like I said, I'm all for STEAM. It is something that we shouldn't deny the kids if we have the, uh, availability to fund it and to get the rest of the data behind it. So that way we can start advocating for the Department of Education to implement it into all schools. That is what I want us to aim at doing.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Any further comments on this? Yes, sorry, councillor Ring.
Um, most councillors know my view on this. I believe council shouldn't be funding state education department programmes. I wasn't going to support this. I will support the, the amendment as it, as it up. I would prefer it to be at Lithgow High School, and I'll give reasons for that. But the report that was presented to us, I'm sorry, it's absolute rubbish. LEAP is a document. It does not actively pursue anything. It does not work with anyone. Why? Because it's a document. Document doesn't have legs. It doesn't go and talk to people. And I'm tired of reports and, and documents that talk about LEAP as if it is a separate entity to council. It is not. It is a council-funded project. It's our project. It is one plan. It is one idea moving forward. And the LEAP action plan does support the STEAM academy. Uh, the page sixty-five of the LEAP document states facilitate university, TAFE and industry partnership to complement and stimulate innovation opportunities. No evidence in the report before us that anything has been done. No assessment of why Portland Central School. I've been to Lithgow High School and I've gone through what the principal has done up there. I'm aware of how much money he has invested in STEAM up there, two point five million. I'm aware of how much support he provided this council when we ran the STEAM grant programme. Without their support, it would have been a failure. Now, high school teachers can teach down because they're specialists. They can teach in primary school. Primary school teachers are trained to be generalists. They can't teach up. I believe the high school is the best location for it. I'm prepared to support it, particularly if it goes there. And we do need to have proper consultation with key players and key stakeholders in the community. And that includes State Farm. That includes Notre Dame. That includes possibly CSU, um, at Bathurst. We need to talk. Mayor, in the report, it claims on page twenty-four, it claims that Lithgow Council will coordinate a program funded by the Department of Education in partnership with council. It's ludicrous. That is not going to happen. That's a deal breaker. We've seen the issues with the project out at Portland's with the grant we received. We had to hand it over to the department. They're not going to back council coordinating a program with their teachers run on their skills. I'm happy for this, but I would like a timeline when this meeting is done. I think we need to get something done before Christmas. Would you be happy to put a, a timeline for this meeting, if you may?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay, it's got to happen before the end of school term.
So, we'd like to do a, a
Well, I'd like an additional point that, um,
D, yeah.
Uh, that the council organised an urgent meeting with key stakeholders uh, to resolve the establishment of an academy of STEAM excellence. And I believe that it should include both the mayor and deputy mayor if we're available.
I have no problems with that. Councillor Marnie, do you have a problem with that?
No.
Did, did the minute taker get that? All right. Did you want to repeat, please, councillor Ring?
Do you want to read what you got, or is? Uh, uh, and the STEAM, an academy of STEAM uh, to, uh, prior to the end of the school year? Inclusive of the mayor and deputy mayor if available.
Yeah, just in endorsing that, that point, I just, just want to make clear why I am. Uh, we have a new school year starting in February. Uh, getting all the ducks in a row, if we leave it for more than a few weeks, won't happen till February. And so that momentum at the front end of a school year is lost. So, um, that, that's why I'm supporting it. I, I think it's an urgent matter. And if you can, eh, you know, expediate it, that, that would be good.
Yep, absolutely agree, councillor Marnie. Councillor Goodwin?
Uh, yeah, Mayor Coleman, um, the principal of Lithgow High School has made significant steps in setting this up. Um, he's, he put in, uh, a lot of money, two and a half million. Um, there's been no consultation made with him or his director. Um, I believe this will, all, all this funding will also, um, go to independent schools and private schools, which I don't agree with. I, I want to know what their contribution to the I, I want to know what their contribution to the fund is. Um, I think independent schools and private schools should be putting some funding towards this if, if they're going to be included. Um, as, as Lithgow High School, uh, or as the, the State Department of Education is, is putting a lot of money into this. Um, it should be raised, uh, it should, it should, as councillor Ring said, it, it should be uh, at the Lithgow High School, not out at Portland. That's what I, and that's how I believe that should happen. They've got drive there, they, and not that Portland doesn't have drive, but they've got, um, they've got a, a, a good principal that's driving it now. Um, and I think that he will drive it into the future. So there's, there's runs on the board already there.
Couldn't agree more. Is there any further commentary on this before I do write a reply?
I couldn't agree more with councillor Ring, councillor Money and councillor Goodwin. The principal at the high school has been absolutely crucial in ensuring the success of the past and program, and I believe this future program. What's so important is consultation. We need to ensure that we're consulting with the Education Department on where, how, when, and we definitely need an urgent meeting to make sure that we don't miss the boat. Especially now that we're coming to the end of the school term. So it's just absolutely crucial that we get this right at this stage. If this, that's my right of reply. I'm going to put the motion to you. If, all those in favour, please raise your hand. All those against, that matter's being carried. Thank you, councillors.
The next item is two point four, ordinary meaning of council states twenty twenty-six. Um,
I'll move that, mate.
Put this into the
Uh, uh, councillor Money's actually raised this. Yeah, he's raised, he but he, you're moving, who's moving the recog, councillor Statham was moving the recommendation. Yeah. Is there a second to that, councillor Money? Are you seconding that? Okay, councillor Statham?
Oh, I don't think it needs any more discussion. It's very simple. The dates are in front of us and there's no, um, conflict of any, from anybody, I wouldn't suggest.
Councillor Money?
Okay, um, trying not to introduce a contrary point, but, um, I just wanted to put in front of the councillors, just given that we've got the, the long weekend at the end of January and we've got a meeting on the Tuesday night following it. Um, I spent about two days on this paper. Um, so on the public holiday of January twenty-sixth, I'll be largely reading January's paper. I'm just wondering whether there is a, a, an agreeance in the councillors maybe to have two meetings in February. One on the second of February in the, the programme, twenty-third of February, which gives the staff and councillors an opportunity after having leave for the very small time during the year. I, I think there's people in the community that perhaps don't think we do enough as councillors. But, um, my dealings with most of the councillors here is, uh, they're on the job every week for the large part of the year. And I just think if we could, uh, perhaps consider starting the year's meetings just post, uh, the January, uh, twenty-seven date that's proposed. Put that in for the councillors.
Councillor Statham, would you consider changing that since you've moved the motion?
Sorry, is an amendment being put up?
No, he's just making a suggestion.
Can we talk about the suggestion?
Yeah, would you like to move it as an amendment?
Thank, no, what, what, no, sorry, what I'd like to say, there, there's no amendment. We talk about it. Um.
No, um, there was no amendment. I was just
The first council that I was on, we, we had a standing thing where if it's a long weekends, the council meeting wasn't on a Tuesday, it'd be on the Wednesday later in the week. And I do agree with that. Because some councillors may want to go away for the weekend. I don't know why they think they're entitled, but apparently some do. So look, I, I'm happy to, if councillors or the mover and seconder want to change it, um, to put it back a week or whatever.
That's what I was suggesting, to come back to councillor Statham.
Yeah.
Since she did actually move the recommendation, would she consider taking on board what councillor Money has said and change that part of the recommendation?
Would she also be happy to make it the twenty-eighth, the Wednesday rather than the?
Maybe it would be better if we all had a hand up. Who would prefer each day? Because it seems a simple thing, but I'm happy to change it.
I'm happy to accept the twenty-eighth, the Wednesday.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that. It's bank
Twenty eighth, so that's the twenty-eighth of January? Yeah.
Councillor Money, are you okay with that?
Okay, so councillor Statham, if you're happy to, if you're, you're still the mover, so change the twenty-seventh of January to the twenty-eighth of January.
Yes.
Are you happy with that?
Yes.
As the mover and the seconder, that's the change? Councillor Triceur, you're okay with that? That was your suggestion. Is there any other councillor that wishes to speak on this? No? Okay, we've got that change in, yeah. Uh, is there any further commentary on that or debate?
No, I'd write a reply.
You're happy for me to put it, councillor Statham?
Yes, just put it, thank you.
Put that to you, all those in favour. All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Next item is two point five, financial statements for the year ended thirty June twenty twenty-five. Is there a recommendation on the page? What's the will of the council?
I, I would like to move with an additional point.
Sure. Would you like to move it? Is there a seconder?
Well, I, I think I need to read up the point first.
Okay, so you're going to put up, yeah.
Um, point four, let the mayor advocate for the reimbursement of seven point two million dollars in completed works refused under DFRA program.
Who would like to second that? Councillor Money? Councillor Ring?
We, we've heard from the, the auditor, but I would like to put a couple of questions to, through you, Mayor, to the Director of Finance and Governance, if I could. I'll ask them one at a time. Uh, can you clarify the relationship between the net operating loss after accounting, the capital grants and contributions of eight point one million and the net operating surplus before depreciation of ten point four two million?
Uh, Director Brownie?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, the difference is depreciation. So, um, one result reflects the depreciation, the other has it removed. Um, ideally, what we attempt to do, um, is to ensure we have an operating result that includes and covers the cost of depreciation. Um, on, on the basis that, that would cover future asset renewal. Um, so that is a, a, um, um, a matter for, um, of contentious, at the contentiousness at the moment in the industry that's being
Sorry, can I ask you to dumb it down a bit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, does the money, I'm sorry, I spend a lot of time going over these reports again.
Like I did earlier.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe not as blunt, but, um, we have to put money away for capital. Where's it coming from? Is that the ten point two? Um, I, I understand depreciation. I have your views on it. But I just want you to really dumb it down.
Yeah.
Just so people understands, this is more of a, um,
Yeah, so the money, the difference is essentially, so it looks like we've got ten point five million dollars up our sleeve. In reality, what happens is we use a balance of cash kept in reserves and we also spend it on capital renewal. So that income statement doesn't include our capital expenditure. So essentially what we try and do is balance our budget every year. So what we use in reserves and what we, um, earn in income gets spent on capital expenditure and, and operating expenditure, and you aim for a balanced result.
Yeah.
Um, so in this year's statements, what it shows is that we used twenty-two and a half million dollars from reserves, which would have mostly been grant income received in previous years. And we were able to spend thirty-five point four million dollars on capital. So that was that new and, and renewal figure that the auditor went through at the, in the presentation.
Okay, in, in the re, the report, you also talk about the use of reserves to fund seven point two million that DFRA refused to fund. But you're only recommending three point six million through pay. Why?
Yeah, so, um, some of it's covered because we, we underspent elsewhere, so we didn't have to put to reserves as higher amount as we anticipated. So that brought it down to five point three versus the seven point two. Um, the balances, we reviewed the reserves and what was retained in those reserves. And we found that some expenditure had already been delivered and funded under general funds, so it was no longer required to be restricted.
So the next one is a bit of a statement and a question, so bear with me. Um, the DFRA decision will have an adverse impact on our cash reserves moving forward. So we'll need to carefully stagger major projects and where necessary, make reductions in our operating budget. Um, the next few years will require the local councillors to be highly focused on financial management and defining what standard of services are necessary moving forward. Are there any underlying financial matters that as councillors, we will need to consider over the next few years?
Yeah, certainly. So the, the, obviously the biggest challenge is to address the infrastructure backlog that's come out as a result of the SRV funding of the road studies. Um, and obviously as we undertake those studies on other asset categories, that will obviously, um, provide additional data. Um, also, as was identified in the finance committee meeting as part of the budget, um, there's an underlying issue of about one point four million dollars, which is essentially because an operating grant was discontinued. Um, so it'd been there for probably four or five years before and has now gone. So obviously budgets were balanced before that. Um, and that was unknown at the time of the SRV preparation, that, that would be a challenge to be overcome. Um, what's critical and was identified in the financial sustainability plan is service reviews. Um, so that was always part of the response, um, in terms of becoming financially sustainable in the long term.
Okay. What about our cash flows? I mean, a couple of councillors already asked about it. What is the impact on our cash flow? Do we have capacity moving forward? Do we have job?
So, um, cash is at a crunch at the moment, um, um, which has been identified with the finance committee. Um, so it is a significant challenge we need to overcome, um, because, you know, we weren't anticipating to have a cover of seven point two million dollars of um, what was done in good faith in terms of, um, recovering of assets as part of the natural disaster responses. Um, not taking away from the guidelines, but obviously it's a different, we before had a hundred percent of claims accepted. We only had forty percent, but originally we only had twenty percent approved. So we did a lot of work to, to bring that percentage up. Um, but will have a significant impact. Um, so some of those internal reserves were, were put aside for some, um, pretty important works that need to occur. Um, and that obviously constrains and delays the, the, the delivery of those.
Thank you. Um, so I think, Mayor, that you really need to put dot point four at the top of your shopping list. We need to get some of that money back, so you need to get the work. Thank you.
No worries. Councillor Money?
Uh, firstly, I appreciate the work you've done, um, Mr. Brownie. Um, I always appreciate these reports. I, 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 we're still talking in terminology that we need to continue to, to work with myself and other councillors. So I'm not saying that I'm, I've, I've got tremendous financial expertise. Um, I think one point, and councillor Ring spoke directly to it. If we look at the exposure to disasters in New South Wales, they're predominantly, without fail, regional LGAs. And this creates a, a cost burden on, on councils that are least equipped to respond to economic shock. So, you know, if we look at the floods up in the Lismore, up in the Clarence Valley, or whether we go into Yggara, or we'll go down to Europe, Vidalashire and Sholhaven with fires, or you come to our own community where we had the whole lot. So we have fires and floods. These things place a significant economic shock. When I talk to people about whether they want to talk to climate change, or whether they want to talk to climate events, or whatever terminology they want to put to it, I, whilst coming from an environmental management background, I talk to the economics because the economics are, are devastating for some communities. So I don't think we're left with much of a choice but to take emergency works as they come in front of us after these events. So the seven two point two million impact, the community expects us to get on with the job of creating normality in our assets. So I appreciate the challenges there for our, our community. The infrastructure backlog, and I won't go on about this for long. I've been consistently, and I won't say I'm the only one, that people in the previous terms of council before I came on spoke strongly to the need to deal with asset management plans. We're finally arriving and they're telling somewhat of a horror story for us financially. Because we have aging infrastructure and we'll, we'll come to that in a report in some detail at the back about the water outage. These things need to be brought into the light, which they will in a relatively short time, I hope. Um, and that this is not going to be sitting on its head alone. There'll be other infrastructure backlogs that'll come through. I listen in the communities, a lot of talk about amalgamations. Let's just cut us up and, 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 uh, send us off to other councils. Not many councils are having a financial fun time of it at the moment. And amalgamations with other councils under financial stress is like asking a person who can't swim to dive in and save the drowning person. So I don't see that the pathway forward. I think what's important in our, um, campaigns is, and this was spelled out in the, um, the recent two thousand twenty-five state conference, was we need to get the federal assistance grants back to one percent. Um, quite pleasing, the, the motion brought forward by this council sitting out in the central tablelands of the state assistance grant was also supported by the conference. A recognition that, and which is targeted at regional areas. If we want to go through the list of natural disasters, the only ones that are remotely metro are the Hawkesbury and the Blue Mountains. So it's those councils that sit over the edge of the Sydney Basin. All other regional councils were bearing the brunt of these. So it's a mixing. I, I agree with councillor Ring that we need to advocate that we're not in a position just to absorb seven point two million dollars worth of storm and fire damage, flood damage. And neither are many of the regions. So my, my personal view is that it's, we need to have that added to the advocacy. I know that, uh, the mayor and the general manager will speak to this at every opportunity they get when they're talking to, uh, federal, uh, departments. But I, I think that's the main theme out of this. And I, and I appreciate Mr. Brownie for highlighting that because that is a unique thing that regional New South Wales has to line up against.
Thank you, councillor Money. Any further comments, commentary on this matter?
Before I give you a right of reply, councillor Ring, I think it's important that we do put the reimbursement of the seven point two million dollars on the advocacy shopping list. And I want to acknowledge both Director Edgcombe and Director Elwood at this stage. They write very good letters and they do a lot of work behind the scenes in regards to the advocacy shopping list that we have. And I do truly appreciate the, the work that they do. So thank you very much. And so does the general manager. But I will always put my foot, best foot forward when it comes to the Greater Lithgow Region, when it comes to these issues. Councillor Ring?
Just very succinctly, um, I'm glad you acknowledged the staff. The knockback of those works had nothing to do with the staff, the ability of the staff. There was a sheer act of bastardry that has been applied to a number of councils in this state, and it needs to stop. You don't tell councils to go out, do the work, we will reimburse you, then question everything they do. Set the bloody guidelines properly at the beginning, have a level playing field, and don't screw around regional communities. Sorry.
Will I take that as your right of reply?
I, I can do another one if you want. I could be a lot blunter.
We're right. Okay, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. The next item is two point six.
Just a matter of procedure here, um, before we get on to anything else. I was wondering whether we can bring forward six point four from councillor Fredericks' notice of motion on the independent forensic review of council finances, given that we've just gone through the, uh, and accepted the auditor's report. If we can move that forward and get that done because there's another report.
Is there any opposition to that?
I don't ever, I, I've asked for the finance, uh, reports to come out. I, I, I'm happy for it to immediately follow these because these in some ways, perhaps.
I can put it under two point seven. So if we do two points, two point five, which is financial, and two point six and two point seven, I can slip it under two point seven.
Yes.
Okay, and then we can do it there. If you're happy with that, let's compromise on that space. All right, so we'll move six point four, which is councillor Fredericks' notice of motion to under two point seven. All right, if you're right, I'll compromise. So if we go back to the agenda, which is, uh, where are we up to? Two point six. So investment report, October twenty twenty-five. Do we have any motions, councillors?
Yes, babe.
Councillor Money?
Yeah, I'd be to move.
You're having a rulebook on the page. Any second, please? Councillor Goodwin, thank you. That's appreciated. Councillor Money? Councillor Goodwin, thank you. That's appreciated. Councillor Marnie?
Well, I'll speak briefly to it, Mayor Coleman. Um, just a couple of points. Uh, first one I wanted to speak to is, I think it's important that, and, and I thank this Browning for her work on this, uh, that we put into the public view the works that are occurring in these periods. And I've, I've been a significant, um, work that's occurring. And particularly wanted to note the work that's going on in Caprow Main Street, which in Western Main Street, which came, has been highlighted through the flood risk mitigation planning work. Um, it is great to see material responses to significant risks to economic zones in our town, but also for the people who reside in that neighbourhood. So I just wanted to, um, to put that one forward. The other one I, I just wanted quickly mentioned around the internal borrowing, uh, just, just as it's my understanding of being making inquiries as the chair of the finance committee, um, that that has moved from one point nine now down to one point five million. So there is a reducing, uh, number there. So, um, not in any way discounting that we have significant financial challenges as a council. Um, that we, there are some things heading in the right direction at the moment. So I think, and also the other thing with the high value supplier payments. I think it's critical to understand that even some of this, what would be seen as utilities, like paying your, um, software licences and your power bills, they're very substantial costs to this council. Um, there may be some other options with reducing our electricity account. Don't know, we might look at, um, I do remember a previous councillor talking about putting solar panels on buildings. Who knows? Um, so I'll leave my commentary at that, but I, given the recent interest in our council's finances, I think it's, it's worth bringing these reports out and at least taking a few minutes to reflect on them before we pass them in block.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Goodwin?
I don't have any further commentary on that.
Thanks councillor Goodwin. Any further comments? Yes councillor Tasis?
Uh, thank you ma'am. I just wanted to quote from page thirty-six at the bottom where the responsible accounting officer has commented on restricted reserves. And the quote is that council had insufficient, which is underlined, cash in investments at thirty-one October twenty-five to fund forty-seven million dollars of externally restricted reserves and five point six million of internally restricted reserves. An internal borrowing of one point nine million from internally restricted reserves was required for general purposes due to the timing of annual payments for the period thirty-one October relating to software and insurance that was unmatched by cash inflows. This is expected to be repaid over the balance of the year with no significant annual payments remaining in as further rate instalments are received. I just, um, note for the public record and for the rate payers that information. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Tasis. Any further? I'll go back to coun- any further? I'll go back to councillor Marnie. Right reply?
Uh, thank you babe. Uh, through you ma'am. If we could ask the, uh, finance director, do you, do you want to provide a response to that paragraph? Just to, for explanation, since we're out in the, the commentary is in the public setting. So it'd be useful to add that.
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, certainly. Um, so there's a lot of upfront payments that we make in the earlier part of the year. And obviously, uh, a lot of rate payers pay their rates, instalments and quarters. So that's just explaining that I anticipate that we should be okay at the end of the year. But we'll know as the year progresses whether that'll balance out.
Thank you director Brownie. Councillor Marnie?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'd, I'd rather hear from a professional than me express a view. Um, so thank you.
Is that your right reply councillor Marnie? Okay. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you.
Before we proceed ma'am, I'm sorry I was a bit slow earlier, but, um, I'd like to move procedural motion to move six point four to after two point nine. I think if we're dealing with a councillor nom, that anything from the administrative's reports should be dealt with first.
Okay. Are you, are you happy with that? We'll just move it to there. You're going to put it through. I already agreed to do it at six point four. I don't think it matters, matters much. So we'll, let's leave it at that. Okay, so we're up to two point seven, which is quarter one budget review. We have a recommendation in front of us councillors. Is there any motions?
Yeah, I'm happy to move.
You're happy to move what's on the, what's on the paper?
Yep.
Is there a seconder? Happy to second councillor Ring. Councillor Marnie?
Uh, very brief on this one, ma'am. Uh, again, I, I, I find the detail in fairly plain English around reasons for changes in revenue and expenditure projection and capital expenditure bud- expenditure budget useful for the community to understand what is the council doing? And, um, and what is some of the income streams. So I'm pleased to see that we're starting to get some income streams in the natural area operating programme. We have an officer placed in there, um, whilst modest. All of those contributions, uh, stop us dipping into rate payers' pockets to, uh, for income. Um, and there's a series of grants there which is, is useful on page forty. Um, also it, it, it talks to the challenges that we face, that we are getting increases in workers' compensation premiums. Um, all of those things are happening to us as an organisation. So I, I appreciate the visibility that's provided, uh, into the community if they want to, uh, look into these reports. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Ring?
Um, I'd just like to remind people that all budgets, be they personal, private enterprise or local government, we're impacted by many factors that are outside our influence and which cannot be readily identified during the budget phase. Massive increases in petrol, fuel, massive increases in electricity, which go above what's being predicted. And I'd just like to highlight one case in question, and that is the increase in workers' compensation premiums. For our council, this year that's increased by three hundred and five thousand dollars. Any increases in the budget have to be, in budget expenditure have to be met by cuts elsewhere. This is not a reflection of poor management. This is just a reflection of the realities of the world we live in. Supply chains are still in chaos, um, high prices. It all impacts everything we do. Um, the only way we can balance our budget is to make cuts. Every dollar we spend has no reversing back on something else. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. Any further debate on this topic?
Could I just ask a question?
Yes councillor Statham.
Um, the upper Macquarie County Council Weeds Corporation, uh, where are we up to? I've been, a person would like to know myself, but several farmers would like to know how much we're spending on that. Could I please give notice of that and?
Can we take that on notice? We'll take that on notice councillor Statham. Thank you councillor Tasis?
Uh, thank you ma'am. I, I note the, the expert comment in the report on page forty-two going off what councillor Marnie was talking about. But there's a quote there that underneath the cash and investment statement, it, it indicates there is insufficient cash and investments to fund council's external and internal restrictions with a two point two million dollar shortfall in unrestricted working capital. The shortfall has been allocated against internal restrictions. Action is currently in progress to address this shortfall. Uh, where are we up to with that shortfall in regards to the budget?
Director Brownie?
Uh, through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, as you can see, that's changed from the two point two down to the one point nine the following month. Um, so, um, as rate pay, rate instalments come through, it should improve. Um, but we're also undertaking what we're calling a budgetary reset, um, as part of the December quarter review. Um, we're also looking at capital works, um, and the timing of those capital works to ensure that our cash flow actually, um, is within, um, the, the funding envelope, um, for the year end. Uh, so any adjustments that are required of that nature. Um, this budget reset is also to, um, attempt to reset budgets for next year as well, um, to make sure that we're living within the available funding.
Thank you councillor Tasis and director Brownie. Is there any further debate? Councillor Marnie, right reply? You happy for me to put it? Although, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Councillor Frederick, six point four. Uh, this is your recommendation. So what would you like to move? And do you have a second and then speak to it? Yeah, councillor Tasis is seconding. If you'd like to move your recommendation and then speak to it please.
Okay, so the recommendation is that council engage an independent and suitably qualified forensic accounting firm through a transparent and competitive process to review council's financials and spending for the past five financial years. Two, receive a full report on findings and recommendations of the review. And three, make the final report publicly available and implement recommendations that improve council's financial management efficiency and transparency.
Thank you.
So I want to start from the onset of saying this is not an attack on staff. I have complete faith in our executive team and in our employees. I believe they have followed every rule, every procedure, every piece of legislation. I believe they've dotted every i and crossed every t. This motion is not about blame. It's about honesty, transparency and restoring community trust. Because community perception right now is becoming a problem and perception, whether accurate or not, can snowball faster than the truth can keep up. We are seeing the snowball beginning to form. A petition is currently circulating to put this council into administration. Fair enough, this particular petition is likely to fail because it does not look like it's going to have the signatures required to move forward. But it is only the first one. More will come and each one after will be bigger, harder and louder to ignore. Once that distrust takes hold, it spreads very quickly through rumours, assumptions, frustration and, and anger. If we don't act now and if we appear defensive or unwilling, that perception will solidify. And once it does, reversing it becomes almost impossible. I do not want that on our staff's conscience. I do not want that on council. I do not want that burden on anyone. We also need to recognise that there have been decisions made by this council that simply have not sat well with the public or even with some councillors. Decisions such as the two million dollar footpath loan, despite executive advice not stating clearly to do it.
Point of order. The management response clearly states that the administration did not recommend against borrowing the loan. It is not their role.
Please. I didn't state that they said against it. I said that they did not specifically state for us to do it.
Not their job.
So councillor Fredericks, please be mindful of your commentary.
Yep.
Yeah, alright, where was I?
Um, the tendering concerns raised bear at Kramer Park and the mess that was the result of the work performed. Late receiving full funding from the SRV, something that has caused discomfort within the community and within this chamber, especially what has been produced. These are just some of the decisions that are igniting public pushback and prompting people to question our integrity and honesty. Whether we agree with that perception or not, it's the reality we have to face. On top of that, we now have a twenty-five million operating shortfall. Because state and federal grants have dried up. And we also know that we begged the state government to take over.
Point of order. There is not a twenty-five million dollar shortfall.
Operating shortfall, I specifically said operating shortfall.
Councillors, please.
I will ask for clarification from the director please.
Yeah, so let's just hold the debate there. Let's have some decorum and we'll come back to director Brownie. Can you please respond to that? So we don't go any further down this rabbit hole.
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, so the twenty-five million dollar operating loss reported is for the reasons outlined, which was a combination of a whole raft of reasons, but predominantly, um, the rejection of the claims for grants, um, as well as, um, unmatched capital grants from the prior year. Um, there's this, um, in, in terms of mismatch between when grant funding was received versus when it had to be spent.
So literally what I said because of.
Was drying up. It wasn't grants drying up. It, it's, that's the future problem. But for last year, it was about the timing of grants income being received versus when they needed to be spent.
So it's timing.
Timing.
Timing. Okay, right. What says, well, there's a.
To a degree.
To a degree, yeah. Timing. Alright. Councillor Frederick?
So hopefully I can continue again. Where was I? And we have, we know that we have also begged the state government to take over the Woburn Road project because of the scope, the cost, the skill and the scope was too great for us to carry alone and it was too great for any council to carry alone. The executives' own comments in this business paper support that. We asked for help, we pleaded for assistance and the state said no. That alone should be a wake-up call. We can no longer rely on grants or state or federal intervention as our safety net. So it's time for us as a council to pull our big kid knickers up and take charge of our own financial future. We must stop waiting for handouts that no longer come. We must stop burying ourselves in loan after loan after loan. And we must, uh, take responsibility for finding real sustainable solutions. Not every solution will be popular. Not every cap will be comfortable. Not every adjustment will be approved, but doing nothing guarantees failure. This independent forensic audit is the beginning. It is this council finally acknowledging the scale of the problem and committing to finding solutions based on evidence, not guesswork or assumptions or internal reassurance. We need completely fresh, independent eyes. Ourit cannot do this. Just like councillor staff and executives, they are too close to the situation. And let's be realistic. If we cannot afford four hundred and fifty K for a forensic audit, then we almost absolutely cannot afford four point one million dollars every year for six years on a road alone. Not even going into how much we still got to pay for the footpath loan. The idea that we can afford debt but not transparency is simply not logical, nor will it be accepted by the community. Voting against this audit tells the community we fear what we might uncover. Voting for it tells them we believe we have done absolutely everything right and we are willing to prove it.
Thank you councillor.
I haven't finished. Oh, okay. We all know we have followed legislation. We've all followed process. We have all acted in good faith on the decisions we have made. This audit will confirm that, but more importantly, it may just give us a long-term plan, one that helps us avoid falling into tens of millions of dollars of debt and one that prevents us from slamming rate pays with another SRV. We cannot repeat another forty plus percent SRV. The community will not tolerate it and they shouldn't have to. As deputy mayor Ring has said many times, the decision of previous councils fall into our hands. Whilst I don't fully agree with that statement, as we didn't make those decisions, I do believe we are responsible for dealing with their consequences and finding the solutions. And this motion is exactly that, us taking responsibility not for the past but for the future. This audit is our chance to rebuild trust, stop the rumours, halt the snowball before it becomes an avalanche and show genuine leadership and integrity. This is the start of us fixing a problem decades in the making. And this is why I am strongly urging all councillors to vote for it. It's not about witch hunt.
Councillor Tasis?
Um, congratulations councillor Fredericks. You nailed it. Absolutely nailed it. Let's see where it all goes. Thank you.
Further, who, councillor Ring and then councillor Evangelitis?
Um, I have some questions for you, ma'am, to councillor Fredericks, if I may.
Sure.
First question. Given this nom and councillor's prejudice concerned regarding our finances, can she please advise the councillors in the community if she supports councillor Tasis' public request for an exgradia payment of two hundred and fifty thousand? Tom Public Record.
Hang on. The question can be asked, but the councillor is not obligated to answer.
I appreciate that, ma'am. I'm asking the question regardless.
Well, she's not obligated to answer.
Um, as far as I'm aware, that's not before the council. When that becomes before the council, that is when I'll vote on it. Okay?
No, that's fine. Um, same with the transparency. Number two, I withdraw that comment.
Thank you.
Sorry. Pardon my moment.
Councillors? Yes, point of order has been.
And I've apologised and withdrawn.
Withdraw, apologise. Thank you. Alright. Come, let's have some.
Okay, second question. Does the councillor have any concrete evidence to support her request for a five-year forensic review? Given the management responses and the fact that the auditor said a forensic audit would imply corruption or fraud?
Councillor Fredericks, you're not obligated to answer.
Oh no, I'll answer. I have no issues to answer. It's not about whether or not I have evidence. It's producing evidence to stop the dissent happening in the community. We have to do something to stop it. Otherwise, it's just going to get bigger. It's going to get louder and it's going to be harder to ignore. You might not care about them getting out there and screaming. So you asked the question.
No, that's a personal attack. I'll be quiet. Let your little girl talk. Please shut up.
Councillors? She's had, you've asked the question. It's been answered. Councillor Tasis, do not yell at me. Do not yell at me. That's, I am trying to do that. If you be, calm, please calm. Councillor Ring, please make sure your questions are respectful and succinct. Councillor Fredericks, you've answered that question. Let's move on from there.
The third question is, can councillor Fredericks advise what services that she would cut in order to make savings of five hundred thousand dollars to fund this order? in order to make savings of five hundred thousand dollars to fund this audit?
Are you happy to answer that? You're not obligated.
Well, that's the thing. We don't know what services we can cut. That's the trouble we have. Talking about this twenty million dollar loan that we're looking at applying for, we've asked what services need to be cut. We don't know yet. That's something we've gotta look into.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. You've answered that question.
Okay, I'd like to speak now.
Now you're gonna speak?
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, during the past twelve months, there's been four dedicated finance meetings and two recently combined finance and infrastructure. It's only the last two meetings that councillor Fredericks has attended. I appreciate she's got children. Personally, I find this notice of motion offensive. It implies that councillors and administration are corrupt or totally incompetent. I'm sorry, it is my opinion, I'm entitled to it.
What's your point of order, councillor Tysus? Councillor Tysus.
Point of order, that is a, a, an adverse comment against councillor Fredericks. Absolutely.
Let's make sure the debate's respectful, councillor Ring. And I made it very clear in my opening statements. And councillor Fredericks, I'm chairing. Councillor Ring, please make sure your statement is respectful.
It is respectful, basically.
He's entitled.
I'm entitled to my opinion.
He's entitled to his opinion, but it needs to be respectful.
It's not respectful, mayor. It needs to be withdrawn.
Needs to be respectful.
I will not withdraw.
He's not, councillor Ring, continue.
Um, councillor Statham has had baseless accusations framed during the last twelve months. Of course, there are a lot of stress and reports like this only cause the conspiracy theorists in our community to stir up trouble. No councillor should be put in a position that we're being accused of fraud or corruption. And that's what a forensic audit implies. The performance of council is highly regulated and monitored. As I've stated publicly, it is the councillors who are accountable for the operations of the council, including the results of the annual report. That's not my opinion, that's, that's in the legislation. I would um, like to move an amendment, but before I do that, I'd also like to flag a matter arising um, from this report in accordance with nine point two of the code of meeting practice.
What's your amendment, please?
My amendment is that council note the management response.
And is there a seconded for that? Councillor Mani, you're seconded. Okay, you can come back to that. And your matter arising, you need to flag that now?
Uh, bas- basically, no, I'd rather get this out.
You gotta wait to do that? You waited afterwards. Okay, you've got a matter arising, councillor Ring.
Um, I think the management response has said it. Council budgets are complex, they're difficult. Borrowing money is a normal part of business for councils and business and for individuals, that's how we buy houses. Our ability to borrow money is dictated by our capacity to repay it. Yes, the concept of a loan has been discussed in relation to the roads, but not yet. This is why I wanted the, the next item, this after the next item. Uh, I have a number of amendments to that and I'm not gonna support the law at this point in time. I do support the principles, but there's more information needed. We are doing everything that we can to responsibly manage the resources of this council. Grants, this council, all councils live on grants. The amount of rates that we receive and fees and charges are only around about forty-five million. We would not be able to operate. If people think our potholes are bad now, God help us, we're on at forty-five million. If we don't take affirmative action to reduce our depreciation, which is a book figure, if we don't take action to upgrade our roads, there are gonna be more deaths, there are gonna be more accidents. We need to take positive action, but I don't believe this is correct. As the order is set, there's no, a forensic audit is about corruption and fraud and I don't believe there's any evidence for that.
Councillor Mani.
Um, I'll reserve my right to reply. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Any further councillor Evangelitis? We've got an amendment in front of us, but would you like to speak?
Essentially the same topic, isn't it?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, I'll save your four hundred and fifty K. You, you don't need a forensic account. Everything's open. You're just not happy, sorry, the council is just not happy if the decisions that have been voted for.
Point of order. He said councillors are not, he said councillors. Okay. Please be mindful, be respectful.
Okay. I, yeah, okay, it wasn't um, intended to be an attack, a very weak attack. Um, to refer to a social media page which has around twenty active users and a thousand members in this council for me is bizarre. Um.
The border me, she didn't refer to a social media page.
He's referring to it.
No, yeah, but he referred to a specific one.
She referred to a, a, a poll on a social media page. Yeah, you.
Uh, point of order, mayor.
Can we just settle down, please?
Discussion has to speak with a point of order.
I have got the chair. Councillor Evangelitis, please refer to the debate that's happening at the moment. Don't refer to the councillor or decisions. Councillor Tysus, councillor Fredericks, please just sit, listen and allow the councillor to speak. Let's have some decorum and let's have some respect. Councillor Evangelitis.
Okay, um. I a hundred percent would not support this. Everything is in the open. The decisions made are made by council. The, the talk of the community being an uproar, I'm on social media a lot. I disagree with that comment. This is not a role for a forensic accountant. There is no money missing. There is no fraud. There is no unexplained funds that have taken a holiday. It's all there.
Thank you. Any further debate? You've spoken already. We're on the amendment. Oh, you can speak on the amendment. Yes, councillor Fredericks.
It is clear, certain people have ears painted on their heads. Now, councillor Fredericks, please.
Point of order.
Councillor Fredericks, you just called another fea- a fellow councillor into gear for the same reason you're doing the same. Be respectful. Sorry, I withdraw that comment. I specifically stated, I personally do not believe anything wrong has been done. The only way to quiet the tiny little snowball that is going to become an avalanche is to get out in front of it. I'm not accusing anyone in this council of being corrupt. That's already happening out in the public. You see it every day. Every council is facing that accusation from their communities. But the longer we let that crap ride, the louder it becomes. Do we wanna get out in front of it and show them the truth that we already know that there is nothing wrong happening? That everything is being followed to the teeth? Or are we gonna let the rumbles become thunder? This is what I'm trying to get at. We need to be proactive. We need to get in front of this kind of stuff and cut it off at the head. Otherwise, it's just going to get worse. In two years' time, if it's still going and it's still getting louder, a forensic review has kinda cost a lot more.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Any further commentary? Councillor Statham.
I feel very torn with this particular notice of motion. I do feel I have reason to feel that way. I only voted for the SRV as other councillors did. To clearly say from the then general manager, there will be no services taken out. Now that, every councillor that here is here tonight, that was here last year and a half ago. That was the one thing that made me vote for that. There was going to be no services reduced. I'm not gonna name anything now or point the finger. I know how much this is going to cost. But I feel really sad to think that there are many services that I suggest may have been cut. And to that end, how did that occur? I don't know how that's occurred because if I was to speak to ex-general manager Mr Craig Butler today, I don't know whether he would have any idea what has gone on. I was tempted to do that. I thought, no, that's not right. So I feel, I don't wanna spend the money at all. But why on earth did we go from being, having uh, quite an excessive plus in terms of when all the rate money came in and to think there was no services going to be cut? I feel like there, there's something, I'm not saying not right, absolutely not, not accusing anybody. But for my own personal wellbeing after being bashed around the head with a number of things this year. Uh. I feel that there shouldn't be as many. I realise the funding's given up, uh, yes, and we probably didn't bring that into the projection. But I do wonder how we are now in this particular state with just a year and a half behind us. I do wonder that.
Thank you, councillor Statham. I'm gonna hand over to the general manager because I want certain questions that have been asked, cleared up. I mean, councillor Frederick has touched on administration. I wanna know how that actually works. I need to understand in regards to financial sustainability. I also wanna understand. Um, councillor Fredericks, you mentioned how much this would cost. Did you in your, how much was you were saying?
Uh, Ms Browning has stated it in her reply that it would cost four hundred and fifty K.
Four hundred and fifty K, okay. Thank you. I, I go to the general manager.
Uh, through you, mayor. Just very briefly in response to councillor Statham's comments, just a couple of examples that have come up in reports considered by council tonight is the seven point two million dollar uh, rejection of claims of, for natural disasters the council spent but wasn't reimbursed for. And um, other examples of substantially increasing costs such as workers' compensation were also mentioned. Um, just in relation to financial sustainability. I'll just um, quote from a report that's prepared Australia-wide by council's insurance. It's an annual uh, risk survey of all coun- of councils in Australia. Financial sustainability has been the number one risk for all councils for, uh, consistently for eight consecutive years. Uh, and that goes back to a time, um, two thousand and seventeen. This council did have a financial management maturity report completed in early two thousand and seventeen. All um, all recommendations from that report were implemented. Regarding financial sustainability, the, the report from J L T states that financial sustainability remains the foremost risk for Australian councils, primarily driven by funding challenges. Costs shifting from high levels of government and insufficient rate revenue exacerbate this issue. Many councils face the ongoing challenge of prioritising various risks that impact financial sustainability whilst striving to maintain service delivery, delivery and community wellbeing. Thank you.
Great. Any further debate on this? We've got the amendment in front of me. Any further debate on the amendment, councillor Mani? I'll come back to you. You reserved your right.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, just gonna go back on a historical point. Uh, Ross, uh, sorry, it's the Gurney that general manager has raised. My understanding that in two thousand and sixteen, council, Lithgow City Council was declared not fit for the future. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, through you, mayor. That's my understanding. I wasn't at Lithgow Council at that time, but yes. And that um, was one of the prompting reasons for a financial maturity report to be prepared.
Exactly.
Yeah, and a multi-year implementation programme followed and as I said, with all, with all recommendations implemented, which included the recruitment of uh, quite a few more uh, qualified accountants such as myself.
Yes, um. Despite this, it was determined that under the then local government minister, the council would stay as a separate entity. Um, with that period, two thousand and sixteen was the commencement of asset management planning in local government. Now, I'm not here to fire bullets at anyone. Uh, but this is probably one of the, ranked with some of my worst homework delivery moments in high school. Ten years later, we've delivered the homework. What the homework has uncovered and, and the homework has been well done. And when we do go back to the roads report, it's something I think we can be proud of as an organisation, what we've done with that. Is, here's your backlog. Now, this backlog wasn't known prior to the S, SRV being completed. Now, there's only three councillors in this room that voted for it, myself, councillor Statham and councillor Goodwin. I voted for it and there was a lot of, people had stared me down in my friendship group and because I could see what was coming over the hill. I didn't know what the number was, but it was obviously we were going to be hit by an asset backlog. And we will be when the water and sewage come forward. Anyone that thinks that our sewage and water infrastructure is up, up to scratch as far as replacing aging infrastructure. It's seen plenty of evidence over the last five years. So we're sitting there with that financial uh, challenge. We determined a number of twenty-seven point seven that the average partner should pay. We've now found that, yes, we do have a bigger cost burden than, than we planned for. The risk now is, do we look at borrowing money? And if I can ask another question, because I think it's important we understand this in context. Was there any money borrowed for the Cullumb Bull and Sewage Treatment Plant, if I could for you, mayor?
Yep, um, ma- um, director trap?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Yes, council had a proportion of that as part of the um, original funding process. It was four point eight million came from the state government. We had to utilise two million dollars of our own funds for that, which uh, one and a half million of that was loan funded.
Okay. Can I, probably the general manager can answer this. Thank you, Mr Trepe. How much of that loan is outstanding?
General manager?
Uh, through you, mayor. I think we would need to take that on notice.
Okay, all right.
Just director Browning, would she, would you know?
I would note that loan terms are usually a minimum of ten years.
Okay.
So I suspect that there may still be some owing on it, but we could give, we could.
I suppose where I'm going in my apologies, I should have put these on notice here. I know we borrowed a million dollars to manage cash flow. Any of the staff aware of that? And could they give me an, an understanding of how much the balance is on that loan?
Uh, through you, mayor. That, as was agreed with council, that loan has been fully repaid and was repaid within uh, twelve, twenty months as planned.
Okay, thank you. The, the point I'm trying to get to is, we, we, we've had a very sobering um, assessment on the condition of our roads. More than fifty percent of both our sealed and unsealed, if my memory is right, are in a port of very poor. Once we go to a full rebuild of those roads, then we're in strife. And the, the loan option, as councillor Ring pointed out, and I believe wants, he mentioned he wants to speak to this. That there's many ways to build savings, efficiencies, as well as understanding whether we use a loan. If we allow the roads behind that to go into a failing or failed condition, um, I'll probably be talking about a different word and it's called administration. Because I think as a council, if we're not taking the, the uh, professional advice of our council offices and the risk profile that we have in our road systems and essentially sitting there with our hands under ourselves, not wanting to, to make a hard decision. I made a hard decision to support the SRV. And, and so did councillor Statham and so did councillor Goodwin. Three other councils made the same de- decision and they weren't re-elected. So people made some hard decisions based on some hard economic facts in the last term. So we, we need to step up to the, the issues. I'm not gonna write in commentaries about where people's ears are and, and who, social media and things like that. The reality is, if we ask for a forensic accounting exercise, it's because we believe there is fraud. Um, I'm, I'm watching the monthly reports and the detail that's put into those in front of us. None of the items I see in front of us in the notice of motion indicate to me any evidence of fraud. Um, it's, we've got eighty-odd thousand sitting in code of conduct, unplanned work and unplanned budget. We got a now four hundred and fifty of unplanned. When the people come to the sports advisory committee and say, can you fix a leaking roof? Can we have women's change sheds? Can we fix the retaining wall? Can we sponsor Iron Fest? Can we bring back the community grants? No, there's your money there, folks. It's in those two budgets. When we sort out whether there's fraud going on in our organisation. When we sort out whether there's fraud going on in our organisation. And I understand code of conducts both come from vexatious claimants outside the organisation as well as councillor and officials. In the organisation, we can start putting some of that money back into the community. And that's the snowball that, that I'm got coming down my slope behind me in the sports advisory committee. They, they wanna see action. They don't, they don't want no more words. They wanna see budget allocated to things and. I'm not convinced that there is the grounds for suspicion of fraud. If there is, there's also a very highly resourcing empowered organisation called ICAC. And I would always encourage people who believe that they are suspecting or seeing corruption. To report it to ICAC. And that's available to the public as well. So I won't be supporting uh this, this motion.
We're talking about the amendment, councillor Marnie, yep, that you, you second the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment before I put the amendment? I just wanna say a few things. A forensic scientist, a forensic accountant, sorry, a forensic accountant. My understanding is about investigating fraud. I do not see fraud. I have full faith in the, in director Browning and her team. I have full faith in Eric councillor Marnie, who's the finance chair. They meet regularly, we get regular reports. I will support the amendment. I must say that the amendment which was, is, sorry, the amendment which is a six-page, which basically is the report that. Director, director Browning gave us is extraordinary and you should be congratulated for the detail and the amount of information in there. Tells me everything I need to know. Um, I'll put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Declare the amendment carried, that now becomes the motion. Before I put the emotion, you can't, you have to write a reply as the original mover, councillor Fredericks.
Look, I try to make it as clear as possible in my opening statement. I don't believe any wrongdoing has been done. But the more dissent that grows outside of these chambers in amongst the community, the louder it is and the harder it is to ignore. I just wanted a solution to shut that all up, to prove that we haven't done anything wrong. We've followed every procedure, we've followed every piece of legislation, every I has been dotted and every T has been crossed. Cause it's gonna keep going. It's just gonna get louder until we actually give them something that's completely unrelated to. Anything to do with council as proof. That was the point I was trying to get across. I made it exceptionally clear. I did not believe anyone here did anything wrong. It was purely to stop the bull crap that's getting spread. It's to put an end to wanting us into administration. It's an end to stop calling us all corrupt. Cause I don't know about any of you, but I am sick and tired of being told that I am corrupt. When I haven't got a single corrupt bone in my body. Where I know I have followed every procedure and piece of legislation. When I know every single staff member has done the exact same thing. And unfortunately, it's those guys up there that cop the brunt of it. I've got big shoulders. I can handle what they say about me. But I don't like what they're saying about the staff members that sacrifice more of their time than they should. This was simply just a way to stop it.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Councillors, all that, it's the amendment motion, an amendment motion, yes. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Division, division has been called. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Coleman. All those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Tarsus and councillor Fredericks. Thank you. We go back to the agenda.
Uh, cheers ma'am, I've got a um matter arising.
Yeah, sorry, yes, your matter arising.
I'd like to move the following recommendation, that the administration work with the finance committee to determine appropriate areas for cost savings. During the current year inclusive of endorsed council projects such as music in the community.
Thank you. Do you have a second if you have a matter arising, councillor Fredericks? Sure, we'll wait for the minute taker. Now, it's a matter arising councillor Fredericks from the motion that was just passed. As according to current meeting practice.
Would it be inappropriate, ma'am, for me to make a short statement?
Yes, it would be councillor Statham. It's on the screen. Right, you've, councillor Ring has moved it, councillor Fredericks, you have seconded it. Councillor Ring?
Yeah, I think it's imperative that the administration work with councillors through the finance committee to determine where we can make cuts. Or where we prioritise work. Regardless of whether or not something be put up by a council, if the money hasn't been spent at this point in time, it's not committed. We need to make difficult decisions and we need to own those decisions with the administration. Cause ultimately, they make recommendations, we make the decisions. That's the whole purpose of this.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Fredericks.
Look, I have to agree. We can't go on just thinking that we can pay for this and pay for that. Things are going to have to be cut. I brought it up last month. If it means that we can no longer hold community events unless they are a grant. We no longer hold community grant events unless there is a grant. If that means we have to cut back on all funding to do with anything event-wise, then that's what we have to do. Do, maybe we do have to go back to basics. Water waste, rubbish, roads. And if that's what we've got to do, that's what we've got to do. It, it's time that our community realise, we're not an ATM. We haven't been an ATM for a very long time. And when the ATM starts drying up, cuts have to be made. So I guess the community needs to decide, would they prefer rubbish collection to start becoming a monthly thing? Or would they prefer to lose a couple of events?
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Any further commentary, councillor Marnie? You actually are the chair of the finance committee. Is there anything that you'd like to say in this space?
Uh, look, I'll, I'll make one comment. Um. Local government is a diverse and powerful entity if it works with all levels of government. There was talk about. Uh, handouts from other governments. The federal assistance grant underpins local government in this nation. We, we've got to advocate to get, push that up. The state assistance grants now offers an opportunity for a conversation. Councillor Ring and councillor Fredericks rightly talked that you need to look at your cost savings. Now, they can be done in different ways. We can look at a percentage across the board. Uh, I've had that happen to me in the past where you're asked for a seven percent saving in your area. It's painful, but it's equal. Um, there's things like salary savings where positions aren't filled immediately. You can look at savings to breach minor things. The events are not gonna bring home the backlog of infrastructure work. The money that's involved is a hundred million around. Um, running, putting twenty grand into Iron Fest and not putting twenty grand, putting a hundred grand into other community events. At the end of the day isn't gonna cut it. If we think that bringing an administrator in. I will contemplate that when I think we're appropriate. We all need to understand the council is then suspended. The councillors stand down, the administrator stands up. The administrator will look at us and go, where's this backlog come from? That's a, a truck coming down the highway, we can't step out of the way, but we gotta deal with it. What about your other infrastructure backlogs? The administrator is gonna find all the structural financial problems for this council area. Starting pretty much from being deemed unfit for future and proceeded to run injured for the next decade. There had to be hard decisions and yes, there's opportunities to make savings across programmes. But we're still gonna have a big financial challenge and I. I'm happy to keep working at it. I think the council has shown in the last term they were, they, there were some pretty brave decisions made there to, to take it forward. So I, I think there's a lot of emotion impacting this whole conversation. There's a whole lot of opt-in commentaries on social media. Um, you can get small percentage of the community talking to you about very specific issues. Whether they wanna put me on the list of councillors to be ridiculed on social media, I'll leave that up to them. I've gotta get here and do the business. And I, I remember councillor Ring talking to me a lot and I didn't agree with him all the time, that we're almost like a board of directors. We've gotta behave like a board of directors, but we're a little bit more powerful than the local real estate agent slash waste collection firm slash. Road engineer firm. If that's what we see the future of local government, let's all just step out of the way and let the administrator in for a while. And um, but that's not how I saw local government. I didn't put my hand up for this. Uh, just to step out because we, we're gonna keep going down that roads rates and rubbish um pathway. With, local government is significantly better than that and um I sort of hope that's where we're going.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Any further, councillor Statham?
Um, can I ask a question please? How many staff are now not doing a position? How much money are we saving on that over the last, you know?
We'll have to take that on notice, councillor Statham. Can we come back to you? And it's not actually relevant to the topic, but we're happy to take that on notice. Thank you. Um, councillor Ring, write a reply.
Yep. Look, I, I sort of agree with councillor Marnie, I sort of don't. Um, we, we have a big role. We, we do have a role to provide social services, but it's not our primary role. The community strategic plan is what determines our vision and requirements for the community moving forward. That's why I want the discussion on what cuts are made to be made between councils and the administration. So we can find a balance. It's not about just saying we're gonna cut all of this out because it's all the hairy theory stuff. And we're just gonna do roads and rubbish. We need to find an acceptable balance. We also have. Massive asset management backlogs, which we need to look at addressing. And if we don't address them, the cost gets bigger and the problem in the future increases for future councils. We have to, actually have to act responsibly and make our decisions. They won't be populist, they won't be popular. But we have to make it. That's why we get paid the big bucks.
Thank you councillor Ring. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that, oh councillor Tarsus, would you like your name recorded? Okay, so all those in, yeah, no problem. Councillor, a division has been called. I'll put it to you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Coleman. Against? Councillor Marnie, councillor, sorry, councillor Tarsus, I apologise. Councillor Tarsus, the matter's been carried. We go back to the agenda. It's two point eight code of conduct statistics. Um, any motions councillors or who would like to move what's on the page? You're moving what's on the page, councillor. Thank you councillor Fredericks. Who would like to second that? Councillor Marnie's seconding it. Councillor Fredericks?
Look, I think the numbers speak for themselves. Twenty code of conducts reported to the year to September. Ten of them put forward for a reviewer. Two have been assessed. Nine were investigated by a conduct reviewer. Only two have found to be unsubstantiated. One found to be substantiated, recommended, had a recommendation. Another referred to council for an alternative solution. Like eighty six thousand dollars for twenty code of conducts and we've only had two. Two found to be substantiated. Eighty six thousand dollars and two out of twenty found to be substantiated. All I have to say is to the right payers, that's your money being spent. To investigate twenty code of conducts and to find two, two substantiated.
Thank you councillor Marnie.
Look, pretty much concur with the end of that statement, councillor Fredericks. Um. In a principle with due process and procedural fairness, if somebody has a vexatious claim made against them. They deserve the right to, for it to be investigated or defended or, or so on. It bothers me that we have so many groups in our community desperately want very small things from us at council. And I'm sure, like, you know, I talked to the sports advisory, we just, I've got it covered in that figure. Um, we get asked continuously, less words, more actions, people. Like, you know what we need and you know what we want. The only things that are in our circle of control are our own behaviours. So that's all we can help to contribute towards is. The behaviour of people out in the community towards councillors. I haven't had anything come at me. Fortunately, and I, and I appreciate when it happens to councillors, I'll watch some very um. Unsubstantiated claims get thrown around at councillors and, and previous councillors. That are completely unfair. And the, and we're in that sort of setting and it's hard to defend those things. So. We can't control our community. We hope that our community will help. To manage the way we communicate to each other, but we can manage our own behaviour. That's the only thing that's in our circle of control. So I, I find it frustrating. I'm not, I'm not on any angelical pedestal. Um, I do the best I can, but I, I know that I've been elected as a public official. And as a public official, I've got responsibilities on how I behave. If I'm not up for that, it's time for me to step down and do something else. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further commentary? If not, oh councillor Evangelitis, sorry, and councillor Statham, I believe.
Yeah, a complete and utter waste of money, clearly. I, I wonder if there was a way or change in legislation where the people making complaints were recorded, how many there'd be? I'd almost say there'd be zero. They hide in the shadows. Hypocrites. They know who they are. This is a waste of money.
Thank you councillor, if you finish councillor Tarsus. Um, councillor Statham?
A point of order, he needs to withdraw those comments because he's talking about the complainants.
Okay, please withdraw at this stage councillor Evangelitis.
What, sorry, what am I withdrawing?
You're talking about complainants. Just withdraw and apologise at this stage if you could.
I was just giving my opinion what I'd like.
Yes.
You're calling complaint.
You're calling complainants. You need to withdraw and apologise at this stage.
Okay, I'll withdraw and apologise.
Thank you. Councillor Statham?
Uh, yes councillor Colin, there was a matter uh last year. Or maybe if not before that, that um there was several codes of conduct in, on this particular person. And um.
Councillor Statham, can I just bring the councillors back to the item that we're actually debating? This is the code of conduct statistics. This is not regarding anybody's personal code of conducts or anybody else's code of conducts. This is about the statistics. We can't go into detail in regards to anybody else's code of conduct or code of conducts in the future or in the past. We need to stick to what's in front of us in regards to the report.
Absolutely, and that's just what I'm doing, thank you. There was several complaints put in about um a certain person and there was much um. There was a lot of conversation over a few months that was supposed to be confidential. And then, uh, I believe, I don't know whether these stats are in this particular situation or not.
I don't think it is councillor Statham.
Well, just let me finish please. You have no idea what I'm going to say. And if you do, I wonder why. So.
Councillor Statham, that is an act of disorder. Please withdraw that commentary.
Happy to withdraw, but I'll continue, thank you.
Please continue to stay on what we're discussing.
Absolutely happy to do that. I would like to um receive information if those two people. Uh, one person, I'm sorry, uh, actually got um to eventually be interviewed. So that we know that that is a stat that was not done. So, you know.
This is about statistics only?
No, but could you please let me listen? And then when the announcement was to made, made, that person had moved from that company. Because the person would be interviewed, refused to be interviewed. And we were almost all told that, you know, there was a, a discrepancy, there shouldn't, this shouldn't have occurred. And then at the end of the day, uh, the um strangely enough. Strangely enough, the man that was looking into it had gone from the company. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure what you're referring to councillor.
Well, I'd like to know if privately, no, right, well, what a disgrace.
I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
I'm surprised you don't call councillor Coleman?
Councillor Statham?
I didn't say anything wrong.
Councillor Statham, we are talking about statistics only.
Exactly, those two, that statistic should have been on.
Well, it's not in the report.
No, funny about that.
Excuse me, I'd like to make a comment.
Councillor Ring?
The code, the code of conduct allows for, or prescribes the behaviour that we all should adhere to. Meetings can get hot, heated, stays in the chamber, you don't make it personal. Um. And there's, there are vexations, complaints, but they have a right to make them. And it's up to the general manager or the the appropriate staff member to flush them down wherever they need to go. You don't have to accept vexations complaints. All complaints should be thoroughly investigated if they're legitimate. And I I do know that the minister for local government is struggling with the review of the code of conduct. Particularly with pecuniary interest and how to address those, because let's face it, you live in a country town, you know everyone. And we we need something sensible there, but at the moment, all I'm going to add is, I said at the beginning of the term. If councils have issues with each other or with the general manager, they should sit down and talk. I've asked the mayor, the general manager to mediate. We shouldn't be wasting our resources on internal complaints amongst each of us. Don't have to like each other, we just have to work together as best we can, and that will have its bumps and its hurdles and its heated moments. But at the end of the day, we shouldn't be wasting our resources fighting each other. Have the fight in the chamber, have the argument on the policy. But anything else, let's just get mediation, sit down and chew the fat. What the public do, that's up to them. What we do is up to us.
Councillor Statham, a councillor Statham, thank you for your commentary, thank you councillor Ring for your commentary. Councillor Fredericks, I'm going to bring back to you for your right of reply.
Well, it's just one of those situations. We're always going to have people that don't agree with what we say or what we do, and they're going to go out of their way to make it hard for us. It it's just part and parcel. Although I wouldn't mind possibly finding a way to advocate to office of local government to make the code of conduct. More clearer, to help filter this type of thing and make it easier for the administration that have got to process through it. Perhaps maybe suggest they put in examples, so that way when people are reading our code of conduct. They will be able to make a semi. Decision on whether or not what they're reporting actually is a breach or whether it's not. So maybe advocacy from council in giving them ideas on how to make our code of conduct clearer. Instead of just leaving it up for interpretation like it currently is.
Thank you councillor Fredericks, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried. We're up to two point nine proposed road programmes, conditions of local road networks, is there any motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move this, I've got several amendments. I I have printed, I'm sorry, I have printed out copies for councillors. Because it will take some time, possibly we could have a five minute break so people can read.
We've only had, we've had a break recently, let's just push through.
Only asking. Okay.
Do you have a seconder?
Well, I think I I'll read it out first, that's why I've given everyone a copy so I can read it out and provides them the opportunity. Whether or not they want to second it. Um, that council one acknowledges the need to act decisively to address the backlog of roadworks over the shortest possible duration. To avoid escalating costs and to enhance public safety. Two, that given the twenty twenty four twenty five financial result impact on council's cash flow. That further financial modelling is undertaken to determine the most appropriate opportune timing for an accelerated program. Three, develop and incorporate a maintenance strategy for sealed roads, specifically potholes and groynes. And that the strategy assessed within the long term financial plan. Four, endorse the development of a government, governance framework such as engagement of external project auditor. Or quality assurance expert to independently check the status of project delivery. Five, approve the publication of the draft road renewal program to internal stakeholders, councillors and the community. Six. Acknowledge the current funding gap and direct that the gap be reflected in the upcoming transport asset management plan. And long term financial plan. Seven, review the purpose for which funds were raised with special rate variation to determine. Additional funds can be redirected to roads, maintenance, under section five O eight. Of the New South Wales Local Government Act nineteen ninety three. And eight, commit to ongoing advocacy for alternate funding sources including grants.
Is there a second? I'm happy to second this.
Then, um, I'll talk to the mayor, um. In principle, I stated in a previous meeting, I'm going to pose to borrow money, but at this point in time, I don't think we should. I think there's more information that's needed moving forward. I don't think we should shy away from borrowing money if we can work ourselves into a better financial position and enhance our cash flow position. If we take a longer view for roads maintenance, the cost is just going to escalate, we need to deal decisively. This is why I want to ensure that there's adequate funding in the budget for ongoing maintenance, potholes, drainage clearance. It is required, it is essential, and the community want this. This is one of the feedbacks I've had from the community. Road service, I get where Mr Edgum's coming from. I understand now the. Need to surface roads that have got alligator cracking. It's a long term strategy to reduce our long term cost. I understand it. The community wants the big potholes filled, they want a better deal. We've got two machines, they should be working full time. I don't know how much that costs. That's why I want to take at least another twelve months to work through all the costs, all the impacts, all the cuts. To determine a position moving forward. And at no time will we ever be borrowing twenty million dollars in one hit. We'll only be borrowing if we do go down that path on an annual basis. On amount recommended by the staff and we as councillors will make a determination on each year. I think this is the best way forward with the roads network. We have to make a decision. This gives time for Mr Edgum for the next financial year to get tender packages ready. So we can go to the tender before the end of the financial year potentially. Or the beginning of the new financial year to ensure these works happen at an expeditious manner. But moving forward, do, how do we enhance, how we speed up this process? Will there be other grants coming on? Will the FAD grant get finally increased to one percent? Yet again raised at the local government conference? Is advocacy with the local roads minister going to help us? I don't know, but we need to look at all those and put them into the picture. At the moment, we just need to take a step back and work out a very good strategy moving forward that we're all comfortable with. And that is fiscally responsible. We owe that to the community, but we do need to take decisive action. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. I supported this because we do need to go steady as we go. And we definitely need a budget. I know that when I sit in the finance committees with the. You know councillor Money's the chair and councillor Ring's there and councillor Evangelitis is there and councillor Goodwin's there and councillor Fredericks there, that's often raised. Where's your budget? And so that needs to be done. I also want to see. The result of the advocacy raised in the previous item in regards to the seven point two million dollars that was not forthcoming. And that will, you know, we're currently working on that. So this is, that is why I supported and seconded this. Motion, but I do understand that the director would like to make a comment and I'll let you do that on the back of that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Coleman and through you, um firstly, I'll start with an apology to councillor Ring, he made every attempt to. Workshop this with the administration, but I had some family issues today and wasn't able to do that, but I just want to raise one particular issue as I said. The original recommendation si- uh suggests that council endorses option A, an accelerated renewal program strategy. With the inclusion of an additional twenty million funding required to support an increase in council's plant capitals and seal road renewal program over the next six years. Uh, the amendment requires that we publicize a draft road renewal program to councillors and the community. But there was also suggestion in the discussion that we start getting packages ready. To do both of those things, we need a direction from the council as to which way they want to go, option A or option B or something in between. The couns- I I need direction from the council as to the strategy. Um, it doesn't have to come with a funding allocation, it can be absent of that. We can consider funding allocations on a yearly basis if, as the council deliberates its draft operational plan. But I need guidance and direction as to what your, how you want me to proceed. Do you want me to proceed on the assumption that we're going to use uh grants and other forms of revenue generation savings and the like? To try and match that backlog figure and we go with option A and we consider those on a yearly basis? Or do we uh take a, a um, a, a. A um, a a slower approach, I guess if I can call it that, and just focus on the twelve million. So that that's what I'm asking, we need, in my view, sorry, my recommendation is that we need to resolve on a strategy before we start. Engaging with the community, otherwise it's going to be a bit hollow.
Thank you Director Edgum. Councillor Ring, is there some way you'd like to modify the motion, taking on that feedback?
I'm I'm prepared to take the feedback on. Um, in principle, I do support option A. But I would not support borrowing money at this time until there's subsequent financial modeling. So I'm happy to put that in as an additional point unless it can be worked in one of the others. Um, possibly just as an additional point that um council supports in principle option A. And that any borrowing is determined by council on an annual basis. Final decision will be last, but I still won't support it for the next financial year in terms of borrowing. I believe we need additional information, including maintenance, but if that clarifies our position to provide a strategic position, that's fine. But ultimately, we will make a determination each year, reviewing the budget. On how we move forward and how much is borrowed. So, yeah, I'm happy that that goes as another point.
Does the minute taker get that?
Question me.
Yes councillor Tarsus?
I think that last one contradicts the other eight. I don't think you can, I don't think you can put that last one in, you can't put an option in if you're going to do all that one to eight.
Director Edgum?
Might I suggest something simpler in that uh we just take a point two as endorse option A. Accelerated road renewal program strategy, full stop.
Councillor Ring?
I still think you're in the same boat.
I don't think advocating for alternative sources of funding actually works in opposition. Um, because if the staff and the mayor is not advocating for grants for the roads, they're not doing their job, it's that simple.
And I'm happy to do my job.
It's, yes, I believe you are, but as part of our job moving forward, we need to seek grants. Grants are drying up. But we just can't sit here and say we're not going to do anything, so, um.
Leave it as is?
Uh, look, I'm happy, I'm happy to endorse option A, subject to adequate financial modeling. And council making decision on an annual basis. So I'm happy to modify it to that.
Okay, just, just wait for.
Because I do believe um Director Edgum's right, I hate to admit it, but um, yeah, it's not personal.
Councillor Ring.
I'm I'm sorry, it's a long night, we could have levity, and his wife gave me permission.
Councillor Ring.
I'm bad.
I still, uh, you need to get some guidance, mayor, in regards to what it is, because I think you can't have those eight. Things and then and then put option A, I don't, it doesn't work with the other aids.
Yeah, okay.
Two contrary, two contrary things.
Edg-, yeah, Director Edgum's, Edgum, sorry, it's getting all night, uh, Director Edgum, your comments on that? And then Director Browning, I'd like your comments on that as well, let's come over here.
Through you, Mayor Coleman, my thoughts are that um by endorsing an option and then retaining the eight points basically says. This is our direction, but we're expecting the administration to equally prioritize a maintenance strategy to support our assets in the meantime. But also progress all other opportunities to leverage additional revenue streams that aren't loans. To the extent possible, whether that's advocacy, whether it's savings, whether it's um reprioritization uh and the like. So I think that they're complementary, I don't think they stand in opposition to each other.
Thank you, Director Browning.
Through you, Mayor Coleman, I agree, um additionally with point six. Um, going with a sixteen million dollar roads program will just change the funding gap to be addressed within the TAM and the LTFP. Um, so it's just whether it's twelve million or sixteen million and the rest of, um, as Director Edgum said, are complementary. Just increases the oversight and the governance applied.
Thank you, okay.
Uh, mayor, I I I disagree because if it talks about accelerated renewal, it's got the objective and everything there. The only option you can put in this eight dot points is option B.
But you're entitled to your opinion councillor Tarsus, or you can put up an amendment circular. Um, is there any further debate councillor Fredericks?
Well, I fully understand the urgency behind the attempt to get this twenty million loan pushed through and for us to accept it. Our roads are not great and it, they're just going to get worse. I hate to say it, hopefully if we do start going into a drought period. Some of the rain damage might just be delayed for a couple of years, fingers crossed. But we do, we need to have all the I's dotted and all the T's crossed before we even contemplate such a big loan. We need to know exactly where we can make cuts, how much that cut is going to be and the ramifications that cut will have. On our functions and operations. We do need a very long, in-depth, detailed report about where such cuts can be made. And I don't think it would be wise for us to rush in to getting such a large loan. When realistically, when you break that twenty million down over six years, it's three hun- uh, three million. Three hundred and thirty three thousand a year for the roads. If we can start doing smaller loans each year around that way, around that amount. It's still pretty much doing what we're aiming to do with the twenty million dollar loan, but in smaller increments. So that way if we become a little bit more financially unstable. We're not signed up to the loan repayments and the interest for the full twenty million. We will be able to juggle what way we go at each financial year. And I think that would be a lot smarter in the short term. For this council and for the staff.
Thank you councillor Fredericks, any further commentary on this? Yes councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, I mean, the management have um addressed things that probably should have been addressed a long time ago. Um, the implementation of the mapping is absolutely fantastic. I think we need to be as aggressive as possible. Um, there isn't anyone in Lithgow that doesn't complain about the roads or doesn't want their road fixed or. Um, you know, understand the fact that roads are a major here. I I want to obviously support option A, but I think we need to be aggressive with this. Um, there's absolutely no point in doing everything that the management have done unless they're given the opportunity to follow through. I agree with councillor Ring, do it in stages each year and for that council to vote on it would would be unprudent. But I do feel we needed to be a little bit aggressive with this and not too conservative.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, councillor Statham?
Um, yes, I think that borrowing twenty million dollars at the moment without a.
Um. Yes, I think that borrowing twenty million dollars at the moment without a really plan that uh will suit that amount of money is probably not real. I would love to see an improvement program of when this occurs, that it will have um uh an improvement in the fact that it will last. I think what's happened is we've had lots of storms. It's been very difficult for the engineering department. And I totally respect that. However, in future, when we do decide to do something, I suggest as much as the um residents will be against it to start off with, we should do it in like an improvement program where you can go away then and leave it for several years without coming back and doing patching all the time. Because this is a, you know, quite, at the moment, we don't have a choice, but this is absolutely necessary to start somewhere and do some things in a manner where we're not going to be called back to do it regularly. And I think the quality is far more important than quantity.
Thank you, councillor Statham. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, my con- I'm I'm happy with the amendment. Um. My concern is that we want to enhance our cash flow, but um we keep saying no to new businesses. So that's my concern.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Any further commentary? Councillor Ring, you'll write a reply?
Um. Just that um looking at the special rate variation, whether or not funds can be redirected, I think is something that needs to be addressed. It hasn't to this date. Uh. The whole idea of this program is to improve the roads to a standard that once they're done, we're gonna have to come back for ten years, maybe twenty years. We're doing work at a higher level than we've ever done. That's about time. And bringing Shepherd on board was probably the best thing that we ever did. We also have that equipment now, so we can go out. The staff can go out and record the condition of the roads on a regular basis, annually, six months, whatever. We can have up-to-date information. One thing I do want to explore and explore in the next infrastructure meeting is whether or not the the technology allows us to go, right, we've got X amount of potholes, or where are the worst potholes? I don't know, but we need to look at it. We need to be, maybe not so much aggressive, but as responsible fiscally in how we approach this. Both not to stretch our cash flow issues, not to overburden council unnecessary debt, but also to avoid excessive costs in the future. We may not be here, but others will be. And we need to do it in a prudent manner. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ring. I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Coleman, all those against? Councillor Taisus and councillor Fredericks wasn't in the room. Thank you. Carried. Uh. We're up to two point ten. This is submission draft central west Orona strategic regional integration transport plan. Do I have a a mover for the or a motion, councillors? We're on, we're on page sixty-five. The motion's on page sixty-six. I'm happy to move it, but I think there needs to be changes. Yeah, no, councillor Martin, if you're happy to move it, I'm happy to second it, but uh there's a few issues that I have with this report, so councillor Marnie, if you can, are you happy to move it?
Yeah.
I'm happy to second it. All right. I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I'll, there's a few issues. Councillors, have you? Are you right? Councillor Taisus, you looked a bit lost. Are you okay? You're right? Everybody's right? Okay. Councillor Marnie, would you like to speak to that first? Councillor Marnie, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. My apologies, Mayor. Uh, I'm happy to move the motion. I won't talk to it in great detail. Um. There's a couple of points. I think the whole signalisation of of the highway is an imminent issue, particularly in the South Bowenfels area, so the discussion around Coltrude Drive. Um. We have had numerous conversations about Merengaru and access into the Great Western Highway. Certainly, there's been extensive advocacy from people in the community and councils about improved inner-city rail frequency and so there's uh all the uh key inclusions that have value. I know there's there's issues about whether Merengaru is is the housing opportunity to unlock, whether there's a desire there with the landholders. Uh. But certainly, I think there's been a lot of discussion around how we manage the highway strip between Tunnel Hill and the uh the on-ramp down onto the highway and through to to South Bowenfels and to McCain Falls Road and into the new section of highway, so I'm happy to move it, to start the conversation and um, yep.
Thank you, councillor Marnie. Look, I note that the report mentions the Great Western Highway Tunnel. I have issues with that. The reality is is that the federal government and the state government have pulled the funding, and we need to focus on what we can actually achieve. And a tunnel is only going to be effective if it goes from under Mount Victoria and comes out at West Kootumbah. They need to deal with the bottleneck at Blackheath and Medlo Bath first before they even look at a tunnel from, say, the en- the the at the bottom of Mount Vic all the way through to Lithgow. I have issues in regards to the report mentoring mentioning that. We need to focus on the Bell's Line of Road or potential expressway, which this council has actually endorsed and support. We need to focus on rail and we need to focus on definitely on the crossings in the Lithgow CBD and safer links between hospital and an aged care precinct. But I do have issues in regards to um the channel being referenced. I understand where the staff are coming from, but let's be realistic. It's, the funding's not there, and so we need to focus on what we can actually achieve. And the state government has mentioned the Bell's Line Expressway. That's what we need to focus on, but that's just my opinion. Any further commentary?
Yeah, I'd like to move an additional point.
To move?
Uh, that the council submission prioritises rail infrastructure and rail inconnectivity between the villages of Lithgow L G O, Bathurst and Orange.
Happy, I'm happy to, I mean, oh, you, well, the mover might accept it, councillor Martin. You're happy to accept that?
I think that's really critical for economic growth, tourism. Um, and and getting people off the 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 road, being able to jump trains to go out to Orange or Bathurst. There's some great specialists in Bath- uh in Orange. And being able to jump the train, particularly if you don't drive, it's a great way to go. So I think it's really critical, it's in there. I think if you're not happy with the tunnel, I'm not real keen on the tunnel because politically it's not gonna happen. Um, it it should be excluded.
Um. Yeah, I'm happy with that, but it's up to the mover. We'll wait for the.
I'll I'll let the other councillors.
Yep.
If useful.
Is there any further commentary on this? It's a submission. Yep, councillor Evangelitis?
Uh, I think we should leave the tunnel aspect in.
I agree with that.
We never know when things are gonna change and to not advocate for a tunnel, clearly a tunnel is the best solution. But to to leave that out, uh it seems crazy to me, so keep on with the tunnel. I mean, some say it's never gonna happen, uh, who knows? But I think we should always promote the tunnel.
Yep, no problem. Councillor Fredericks?
Well, I'll be honest, there are things that we should be advocating for and things that we should just be letting go. Un- unfortunately, I have to disagree with the tunnel. It it's literally from Lithgow to the other side of Hartley. It's not hitting where the problem is. The problem isn't this side. The problem is from Mount Vic up to Lurah. That's where all the bottlenecks happen. That's the part of the road that needs to be addressed, not down here near Hartle- Hartley, not down here near Lithgow. And yeah, I say we really advocate for the Bell's Line Expressway. It'd probably be cheaper in the long run.
I'd agree with that comment. But ca- uh Director Edgum, did you want us to make some comments?
Pl- pl- through you, Mayor Coleman. Plans change and it was a moving beast, but the previous scope for the tunnel uh was portals both where the Little Hartley works currently are and the Medlo Bath works currently are. So the tunnel was going to bridge those those two areas. So it was directly going to address the Mount Victoria and Blackheath challenges. Yeah. So it was going to be Little Hartley to Medlo Bath.
And see, that's, I'm see, I'm, I know I've already spoken, but that's my bone of contention. It shouldn't be from Hartley. It should be from Mount Vic all the way to West Kootumbah. We need to deal with that part of the section first. If we're gonna lobby for a tunnel, then they need to focus on from Mount Vic to West Kootumbah, heading east. That's where the problem is. That's where it needs to be adjes- addressed. That's, that's my opinion. Is there any further commentary? Councillor Marnie?
Uh, just um point four, if um Trinity could just add Bathurst and Orange?
Well, Bathurst and Orange.
Thank you.
Is there any further debate until I hand it over to councillor Marnie?
No, look, I'm I'm conscious of my other role, so I won't make a commentary on the Blue Mountains section of the highway. The only comment I'll make is if you want to see where the the um the greatest challenge to consistent travel time, two o'clock on a Sunday, pack your lunch or your dinner, in fact, and uh drive to Kootumbah. And um I'll leave the evidence to present itself to the councillors.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We move on to two point eleven and I've actually got, I'll move the recommendation with an added point. And the the item is review of Lithgow water outage October twenty twenty five. I've got an extra point that I'd like to add to the existing recommendation.
Depending on the the point, I'm happy to do it because I've got a point I'd like to add as well.
All right, well, we'll just. Uh, then we've got.
It's a supplementary.
She's got it. She's got it. People have got it. She's got it. It's good. There's the extra point up. Have we got the extra point up? That's all. That's my extra point. You happy to still second that, councillor Ring?
Yes, I am. Um. What I would like to do, if I could, is add another point, and that is that the development of an implementation plan and resourcing strategy are referred to both the Infrastructure and Finance Committee and Eric for input and review.
Has that been given to the minute taker?
Uh, it has.
Have you got that? Wait for that to come up. Right, thank you. So I'm moving that and councillor Ring has seconded that.
Um, Mayor, are you interested in a point five?
Depends on what it is, councillor.
And the point five is that it was similar to what I read at the last council meeting. That we, I I know that I compliment you, commend you on your point three, but if we can go with the point five that um not you, but the council provide an unreserved public apology to those Lithgow City Council employees who may have felt any personal blame or humiliation following the uh water outage. I think it's a, not only to the uh, I commend you on the point three for the public, but I I think the staff should be uh um receiving it, recognised with an unreserved public apology, uh that that if there was any harm done to them.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh.
Yeah, that that it's the council, not the mayor, but the council, number five is council provide an unreserved public apology to those Lithgow City Council employees who may have felt any personal blame, who may have felt any personal blame or humiliation. Uh. And you've got during the water outage, um during during and after the water outage. So during end, end, after.
Yep, happy to, you're happy to accept that as a second. I'm happy to accept that as a mover. Okay. You're good to go? All right. We've all got the report in front of us. I think it's important that we have the report to understand what actually occurred on the eighth through to the sixteenth of October. I'm actually gonna read out the apology now. I think it's important that we deal with this tonight, that we resolve it tonight. So I've got my apology written here, so I'll read it out. On behalf of the council, I and the general manager apologize to the residents and the businesses of Lithgow that were impacted in a variety of ways through the communicating of incorrect information from council during the water outage in early October. I am aware of the distress and the confusion that the incorrect messaging on the ti- on the time that the water would be resupplied to customers caused. Council will do better in providing accurate information to our residents and businesses in the future. When we, when this was brought up at the last council meeting, and I said then and I'll say now, I'm more than happy to apologize, but I needed to know what I was going to apologize for. That's why the report had to be done. It also, the report provides us with an opportunity to improve, and I think that's really important. So I want to thank the director who did the report. I want to thank the staff that contribute to the report. And hopefully, in the future, we will get better. Councillor Ring?
Yep, like you, I'd like to commend Director Oldwood for the work he's done on this report. It hasn't been easy. I'd like to thank the staff for contributing to it. It was never intended, it was a debrief, it was never intended to be, let's find someone to buy in. Let's blame an entity. Let's blame a person. That was never the intent. The intent was to look at the structural and the issues underlying the problem and to work towards resolving them. If the staff don't have the knowledge, they don't have the tools to do their job, we hit disasters. At infrastructure meeting on the twenty-second of October, it was resolved that a proposal on the water asset note program will be developed for council's consideration. This needs to be escalated. We need to get this work done as a priority. There are fundamental flaws in how we've managed and how we've resourced the staff to do the work. We need to resolve it. It's not a blame game. Let's just fix the problem. Let's see what we need and get on with the job. Unfortunately, Western culture is too fixated on blaming people rather than just going, well, there's the problem, here's the solution, and that's what we should be doing as a council.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Councillor Goodwin?
It's very important, but I I look at it like this. We've got the roads that are extremely important, the water that's extremely important. Where do we put our money? And we're talking about the the twenty million dollar over six years. Do we put that money towards water as well? We need our, all our um water infrastructure and pipes all redone. Um, it's it's a huge job and that's why we need to come together at a certain point, talk about both of the issues, and there's probably more, the the waste is another thing as well, so I mean, there's there's holes in everywhere where we're gonna lose money somewhere. Um. That's what, that's all I wanted to say in relation to you.
Thank you, councillor.
Can I just ask a question, please, for you, Mayor, to the director of finance?
Yep.
Just based on what councillor Goodwin was saying, could she probably advise the restrictions on the certain accounts that we have? There is the general account, but the other accounts are water. What the restrictions are and how they relate to each other.
Director Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um. So there's an opportunity to be able to fund um um borrowings or or funding sources through adjustments in annual charges relating to waste wa- uh water and sewer. Obviously, with um rates, general rates, we're capped by the rates perk each year. Hence why we have um not the. Hence why we have, um, not the same flexibility we do have in those avenues.
Does that suffice councillor Ring?
Yeah, ba- but basically the, the water accounts are self-sufficient. If they borrow money, they pay it back out of the water. That's basically what, yeah.
Okay, thank you councillor Ring. Any further debate? Councillor Marnie?
Uh, I, I want to thank the staff involved, I'm, I'm sure there were a lot of staff that, of the, um, director Elwood's names on this, and the thing I appreciate that you've looked at the legacy issues, you looked at systems.
Hang on councillor Marnie, uh, councillor Fredericks, you okay? Yeah, you're right, okay.
Okay, alright. Um, you looked at systems improvement, you looked at enabling staff to feel comfortable giving advice through the system. Um, local government historically is a very hierarchical beast. Increasingly, it's getting better at that, and I appreciated that we had a look at that. Um, councillor Goodwin speaks correctly about the, the issues for us that we're going to have some big-ticket items and regional water is essential to regional cities sustaining themselves. Um, so if we have to get this right, we have to get our storage systems right, we have to get our predictions right, we'll expand the regional cities in front of our actual secure water supply and only to find ourselves in deep drought and then we're, we're in strife. We're fortunate, a good portion of our water comes out of groundwater out of the New East Plateau, which is a lot more sustainable. Um, I also liked that the report basically was clearly stated where we, we didn't meet where we should be. So, you know, there's breaches of New South Wales Health Act and Australian drinking water guidelines. We've got to look at that. We can't, we can't step away from the reality of what's happened. Whether we got the parts, I know, I actually remember councillor Ring talking about this about two terms ago, this I'm a little bit obsessed with a few service areas, unfortunately, for you two gentlemen in the corner, it's you guys. Uh, but it's having the parts in the background, so when we do have a catastrophic failure, that we've we're not waiting on someone to come in from America or somewhere. And, um, so I was very appreciative, obviously, we had a first-up event, which was how do we, um, restart the water treatment plant when we're down to zero water? Um, or near to, so the whole investment, and thank you director Browning with regards to the, the water funds are separate entity. And I'm, I apologize that I didn't ask the questions on notice, so you're in a position to answer them. But I understand there has been borrowings in the past in the water fund to bring forward capital works, essential capital works. Um, so I thought also the communication around the over-reliance on Facebook. Um, we see Facebook at times as pinnacle communication. The reality, a lot of people don't opt in to even be part of Facebook, let alone our page. So how we got to those vulnerable communities, how we got to our neighbours. Um, it was nice to see that coming forward in the, in the process where people like the P C Y C and Wild Water, uh, Wild Water, they all started stepping in to say, here we are, we're Lithgow and this, that, we do things, so that was good. Um, so very detailed report. I'm very happy as an individual councillor to apologize to the community. Um, the, 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 the system's failings are part of legacy issues, they're part, but as councillor Ring says, and I concur, they're now my responsibility and the other eight councillors' responsibilities. We need to address all of those findings out of this. Um, reports like this that are well-done often get put in the back of a shelf and then, then, then never actually actioned, so I've got confidence that this isn't going to be one of those. And that, that, that we'll start to move forward on that, so again, I apologize for the impact it had on people and particularly people in, in more vulnerable settings.
Thank you councillor Marnie, councillor Evangelitis and then councillor Fredericks.
Yes, un- unlike the roads, um, it's really hard to see the faults underground. How we react to it obviously is, um, a lot will be learnt from this. The communication, something else that we'll learn a lot from. Um, doing the report is a, you know, great acknowledgement and apology is a great acknowledgement as well, but, um, yeah, I think we'll, the community and the council will learn a lot from this, um, event. Be able to respond better next time. Um, but yeah, I appreciate the report.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, councillor Fredericks.
Well, the, the report did let us know things that we didn't know before the water outage. The water plant can't drop before, below a certain point, otherwise we're going to have issues. We didn't know that, we now do. Hindsight is a wonderful thing. We can look back and go, maybe we should have had things come in at an earlier point. But there's nothing we can do to go back and change that. One thing I do want council to look into is something similar to the emergency texting system that New South Wales do, does have. For fire warnings, missing people, that kind of thing, so that way when situations like this, we do have another alternative in informing people directly to their phones. I know not everyone has a phone, but it will reduce the amount of people that are not informed. Um, I don't know what committee that needs to go to, to have that discussion open up. But, um, I, I think it is something that this council need to lead the way in, in having an emergency broadcasting system directly to the community's phones, so that way in instances like this, everyone who can be updated regularly is updated regularly.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Any further debate on this? No, I'll do a write-up reply. Sorry, you do a write-up. Look, I agree that we need to look at certain avenues of communications. We need to look at sending a text or an app. We need to be able to have a register of those who want to be door knocked. We need to have a mini call centre set up so that they can call in. Um, we need to ensure that, you know, when, when the button needs to be pushed, it needs to be pushed now, not tomorrow. But we will learn from that and we will work on that. And I'm very grateful to the staff who contributed to the report, so thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you.
I'd like to move a procedural motion if I could, ma'am.
Sure, what would you like to move?
I'd like to move on the adjournment of the meeting. We've talked about setting timelines on the meeting. It's ten thirty-seven, you've beaten before, I'm going to beat you this time. Instead of talking about it, we got, actually got to do it. Uh, there's about seven or eight items left, left. That's going to take an hour, hour and a half at least, if we're, we're honest.
Yeah, you're moving.
I, I, I think if there's any urgent.
Can I move a different procedural motion?
I've got one, let's one procedural motion at a time, please. So councillor Ring, you're moving a procedural motion that we move an adjournment to. Uh, okay, uh, I don't need, I don't need a second of the procedural, do I? No. Okay, um, I'll put that to you. All those in favour of?
Uh.
I've got something to say as well.
I wanted, I wanted to move a, a procedural motion that we, we limit the, uh, the, we need to nip this in the bud. I, I don't want to leave this for another meeting before Christmas. I think we just need to say, instead of five minutes, one minute, everyone gets one minute to talk, if you can't talk it in one minute, it ain't worth it, there's not that much on the agenda that we can't finish, if we just go with one-minute talks.
Well, I've got a procedural motion that I have to put. Um, so we move it to an adjournment, my understanding that's under, in the code of meeting practice. You did want to say something before I put it.
I was going to say, um, we, we finish the meeting at eleven, uh, we look at what is urgent um, that we need to do and, and the things that aren't urgent on the meeting, we move to either the next meeting in, in January. I don't think they're urgent, that needs to be, uh, brought before the council before January. If it is, we deal with it tonight, right now, and then we finish up at eleven.
I, I've still got the proceed, I understand what you're saying, I've still got a procedural motion that I have to put, unfortunately. So I'll put the motion that we end tonight and we re-adjourn at a later date. So I'll put that, all those in favour? The procedure motion has been carried. We now adjourn and we'll set another meeting date and time for a later date. Thank you. Good night.